We're in executive session here, all right? I'm going by Pugilist on some Fridays. My brother Jim.
There's one, there's one fifty years from now, all home for that. My, my, my next brother, now he was in seven, he says, Islam says, if not.
There's a big bowl of heaven. I think that's it. You like the state of San Francisco? I know I need that, I know I need that all day. I see this, that's what.
The call, the board of selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, September eighth. We're going to go into executive session at six forty-five, and after that session we'll reopen, and we'll go through what the rest of the agenda is going to be, so. Yep?
Moved into board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one, subsection A, clause three, to convene an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since an open meeting may be detrimental, have a detrimental effect to the litigating position of the board, and to convene an open session thereafter.
Seconded.
It's been moved in seconded. Selectman Hebert, we have the individual roll call.
Oh, what do I say?
Aye.
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 I haven't seen this before.
Mr. Vella.
Mr. Knox, aye.
Executive session.
We never get one of those. 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 We never get one of those.
The call, the board of selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, September eighth. We're going to go into executive session at six forty-five, and after that session we'll reopen, and we'll go through what the rest of the agenda is going to be, so. Yep?
Moved into board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one, subsection A, clause three, to convene an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since an open meeting may be detrimental, have a detrimental effect to the litigating position of the board, and to convene an open session thereafter.
Seconded.
It's been moved in seconded. Selectman Hebert, we have the individual roll call.
Oh, what do I say?
Aye.
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 I haven't seen this before.
Mr. Vella.
Mr. Knox, aye.
Executive session.
We never get one of those. 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 We never get one of those.
We pack in regular session for the agenda for the night's meeting is September eighth. Six forty-five, we had an executive session with the school committee, seven o'clock, organization pledge of allegiance, seven oh five, input updates, public input, members' update, seven fifteen, joint meeting with the school committee to fill the school committee vacancy, seven thirty, joint meeting with the finance committee, multi-year fiscal planning, fiscal year two thousand sixteen and budget priorities. Eight o'clock, public hearing continuation of the Act Three Restaurant, doing business as five twenty-nine King Street. All alcohol restaurant license. Eight fifteen, town properties, A, ones talking about the old police station, B, Littleton Common Rotary Clock, eight thirty, town administrator, assistant town administrator for budget and finance. Three things, November twelfth, special town meeting, cert articles, B, staff vacancy reviews for firefighter, highway temporary seasonal employee, C, scheduled dangerous dog hearing, which will be changed, nine o'clock, other business consent of agenda. Ms. Hebert, would you lead us in the fifth of the leaders?
With pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Town Administrator, any mail, we should go over?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, just a few items. One is an update from the Fitchburg Line project manager, giving official notice to project partners like the town and other communities, and to a legislative delegation that the schedule that I mentioned at our last meeting for Littleton commuter rail station is officially in effect for at least the next eighteen months, and that after that period when construction of the commuter rail line improvements, the capital improvements are completed, that it's expected that there will be further enhancements to the schedule. We are working with the Monmouth Chase Regional Transit Authority, and with Crosstown Connect to come up with some model business plans that we would first review ourselves, and then look at with businesses to see what we can come up with for shuttle proposals, so that we have, so that there's a shuttle at some point, serving the Littleton commuter rail station. There will be an official rollout by the MBTA sometime later this month, with formal press announcements and a press event, but that's, that's the information that we know now, and as we develop plans, we'll be bringing those forward to, to review with this, with this board and others. Also, we have official word from the Department of Housing and Community Development, where we can officially see that we have our Chapter forty-B subsidized housing inventory at twelve point five two percent. I'd reported at the last meeting that the building permits necessary for that had been issued, and now we have the, the written confirmation from the state that we stand at twelve point five two percent. We're not resting on our laurels, though, we're going ahead with our updating of the housing production plan, and, for which we've hired MAPC, and we have a second housing forum, which will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-third, six thirty PM, at the middle school cafeteria, another meeting facilitated by the MAPC housing planners. We received a notice from the Littleton Water Department of increases to connection fees and sprinkler demand charge, and, and in your packet is a, is the, is how those, that current fee structure compares with the previous one. The matter of having a fee structure that raises more money for the water department has been something that's important to the fiscal health of the water department, and indeed the town, so it's, it's actually, it's helpful to the finances of both that they're, that they're addressing that fee structure. Next, we have approvals from the Attorney General of the actions taken by a couple of town meetings, in approving zoning or general bylaws. First, back on August nineteenth, we received approval of the medical marijuana dispensary zoning bylaw, and the flood insurance rate map zoning bylaw amendments that were approved at the May twenty-fourteen town meeting, and then last Friday, we received approval of the zoning and general bylaw amendments that had been passed at last November's special town meeting. In all cases, the zoning amendments take effect at the date of town meeting. If it's a general bylaw, it takes effect when it's published in the newspaper, so. Of the, one of the matters that had been passed at last November's town meeting was a general bylaw amendment dealing with the manner of authorizing indebtedness that, that essentially would allow, that allows the moderator to, to, in the case of unanimous vote, to, to accept the single specimen ballot, rather than requiring the ballot and checklist. And then, the police chief has provided us letters of commendation, which are in our packet, regarding the incident on August sixteenth, regarding one fifty-one Whitcomb Avenue, for which we have letters of commendation, the chief has shared, from himself to Sergeant Matt Pinnard, Sergeant Ed Gucier, Patrolman Michael Corey, and Patrolman Brian Jones. And we appreciate their efforts very much, and thank, thank the chief also for sharing the, those commendations with us. That's it.
Thank you, Keith. Moving on, any public input? Seeing none from the board, start down with Paul, anything?
Imagine it'll be a chorus of us all this evening. The parade Saturday morning was just absolutely wonderful. John Borowski's here in the crowd with us tonight, I'd like to applaud John.
The entire parade committee, and we're seeing, you know, coming close to a culmination of an effort of many, many folks in town have come together. And if I may, just expound for a moment, Mr. Chairman, there's a collateral benefit of what we're seeing on all this, too. We saw the parade, yes, physical manifestation of a wonderful day, a beautiful day here in town, but also the people that were brought in that may not otherwise have been brought in together to work as a team here in our town. Folks brand new, only a couple, three years ago, jumped right in, and are part of the team now in Littleton. So growing those folks participating, and a great number of people got to meet each other who may not otherwise have previously, so, well done. I'll leave the fireworks to you.
This is great.
I agree, it's, it was, it was kind of a hot day, but everybody got through it, and it was a lot of fun, it was a great parade.
Okay.
I agree with my colleagues at the end of the table, there was a great day, and the week started off by the town saying farewell to a thirty-two-year vet of the police force, Chief John Kelly, and swearing in of our new chief, Chief King, so, the, the week started off fantastic, and it ended tremendous for the parade and the festivities of the night, so, job well done.
Okay, you guys said that very eloquently, I couldn't agree more, obviously had a fun time, it was an extremely successful day, looking forward to the ball this Saturday. And, and just a couple of other things really quickly from my side, today is my mother's birthday, so I'd like to say happy birthday, Mom, love you very much, sorry that we're not having dinner right now.
It's my daughter's birthday.
There you go.
Anyone else?
It's a good day.
Should have said sing happy birthday.
A little bit, yes. And then just two quick things, Keith mentioned housing forum coming up on the twenty-third, and I definitely would encourage folks to get out and let us know what your opinions are on the housing needs of Littleton, or at least get us educated so we can represent you, I think that's really important. And then lastly, again, thanks to the, the police department for that great job they did on the Whitcomb Road incident, makes us feel pretty safe, got those guys, thank you very much.
I want to congratulate the chief on finally becoming chief, thank you very much. As far, as far as the festivities go, I, I don't think people really know, some people don't really know all the hard work that goes behind some of this, and you only see, see part of it, and I don't know, as far as the parade goes, how to thank Mr. Borowski from the And I don't know, as far as the parade goes, how to thank Mr. Borowski from the bottom of my heart because he took over when someone else had a family problem, and the organization that he put together was just tremendous down to the last day. I was nervous that he might have a heart attack that day because if you ever saw a parade take off with that many units, how difficult it is to do to get them off at the right time, get it organized, have the volunteers in the right place. And I think one of the highlights that I'll always remember is John driving up with the golf cart to the end, getting out and said, "We did it." Yeah. I can't thank you enough. Unbelievable. And the fireworks, the fireworks that night, we had some bad weather, but we had Loose Connections Band playing at the tiki. The weather came in, the weather got better. The Conquered Orchestra Band was phenomenal. Very few people took part of it because we didn't know about the weather at that point. The weather broke and we had just a tremendous fireworks, one of the best any people have seen in a long time, and a lot of work went into that, too. And I do want to mention the ball. My wife is in charge of that committee, and they will open it up one more day for any more tickets. We sold probably 30 tickets in one day today because everyone was waiting until the last minute. So they are available through tomorrow probably, then they have to cut it off. Chief?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. As most of you know, Friday can get to be a pretty challenging day, the day before the parade. And first off, I'd just like to thank everybody who worked together, Highway Police and Fire. It worked seamlessly on the day of the parade, and I can't say enough about that. But I also can't say enough of what occurred on Friday. On Friday, you know, it was challenging because we weren't sure when we were going to end the parade on Friday afternoon still because of the challenge that was going on. And I want to, first off, you know, call Mr. Keith Bergman for his leadership in getting us through that, but also to, there was three individuals who stepped right up that day without even asking any questions to get us to end the parade. That was Sam Park, Joe Cataldo, and Mike Kimball from Kimball Farms. They gave us a place to end the parade when we were in jeopardy of not being able to go to our original place without any questions asked and without any, you know, without, you know, being contacted on a Friday afternoon at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. It just goes to show, I think Mr. Bergman gave me a quote of, you know, "Our true community partners who live and work here, you know, pulled together to make that day the event it was." And, you know, again, I can't say enough about, you know, all the, and Mr. Knox knows a little bit of all the wrangling that had to go on Friday during the day. It was a rather trying day to get through, but in the end, it was perfect. So, that's it.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Borowski?
I just want to thank the board for their support over the years, you know, that we've been doing, planning everything for everything. Thankful that the chiefs, the two of them, they were great in helping to get everything together, the safety aspect of it. So, I mean, we had a couple of instances because of the heat, but we can't control the heat, so can't control the weather, which I, everything else, but, yeah, we got things done. I just want to thank everybody. I hope everybody had, it was a fun. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we're going to go to the joint meeting with the school committee to fill a vacancy when Paul Avella resigned and became selectman. It opened up a position. It was posted. We have two people who have put in applications. Mr. Rambacher and Mr. Mazzoni. Superintendent Kelly, would you like to start off here? Or you'd probably like to have each of the candidates speak, but I want to make sure it's done with coordination from your side.
You called the order?
Yeah. Sort of give a quick introduction and synopsis, and then we can open up to questions.
Before we start, I'd just like, I'd like to thank both candidates for putting their name forward. Greatly appreciate it.
Mark, you want to come up?
Where are you going?
I'm wrestling. If you'd like to start, just give us a background, if you're interested in this.
Okay. My name's Mark Rambacher. I've lived in town for almost 20 years now. I've been on the library board here for, I'm not sure exactly how many years, but it seems like forever. It's between eight and 12, I think, closer to eight, I think. I have two kids in the school system, a senior and an eighth grader. I've been interested in the school committee for a while, excuse me, but I've always, I've been dedicated to library, and I've decided my, I've done enough on the library and I'm going to phase my time out when my term is up, and I wanted a new challenge. I haven't, no background as an educator or anything like that. I've been serving on the pursuit of excellence committee for the past year, preparing something for the 2020 vision for the school. That's about it.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to come today and speak. As you said, my name is Mike Mazzoni. I'm a 25-year-old, lifelong resident of Littleton. I graduated from the Littleton Public Schools in 2007. When I was, when I was in Littleton, I got involved in, you know, civics and, you know, in the school system. I was the co-class president of our senior class, and I was involved in student council my entire career, I think from fourth grade up until I graduated. I love the education I have here. It was, you know, it was the best thing that could have happened to me. It set me off on, you know, everything that's happened to me since then. I went to UMass Lowell, got a great degree there. When I was at UMass Lowell, I stayed involved, you know, because of the start that I got here in Littleton. I was a two-term president of the student government there, student body president. I was also nominated by Governor Patrick to be a member of the Board of Higher Ed. So I served two years on the Board of Higher Education, which I think would be, you know, huge to have that perspective on the Littleton School Committee. After that, I worked at the State House for a state representative from Lowell, so I got some experience in, you know, the legislature and how the budget works and how legislation is passed. And then I went on to law school. I just graduated in May with my law degree and took my bar exam about a month ago, still waiting for results back from that. And right now, I, in fact, working, I work for the Department of Higher Education now as their deputy general counsel, and I'm, you know, thrilled to have the opportunity to apply for this position.
Thank you. Wait. Mr. Chairman. It's okay with you. I'd like to open it up for the school committee, ask questions first, and probably just start off with Mike, then switch over to Mike, and then allow the board the same thing. But it's a position that we're going to be working with you, so I want to make sure you have the questions there for the candidates.
Thank you. Will we start from the center, Alex?
Sure. So I'll ask both candidates this question, but I guess we'll start with Mark. What is it about the school committee that you think you can add, and what is it about the school district that you might be able to add to it? So two different topics there. What would you like to see the school committee do, and what can you, or, and/or what can you bring to it, and how would you like the school district to do things differently or not, or what can you add to that?
So, what can I bring to the school committee? I am open-minded. I have no political bent whatsoever. I'm probably one of the least political people you will ever meet in life. So I listen to the, what's the opinions and make an informed, logical decision based on my experience and information given to me. What was the other part of your question, Alex?
Yeah, excuse me.
What would I like to see the school committee do and the school?
What can you add to the school district and what can you add to the school committee? So you've already talked about the school committee aspect, school district side, something more in the actual schools. How do you build up schools and what do you think we can do to improve them?
I think the schools are pretty good right now. My kids are getting a great education in the schools. I think the one, where the school needs to go is, I think they're slower to adapt to some of the changes coming along, and I think we need to be more forward-looking in some of the things and more adaptive. I think going forward, the schools are going to be facing a lot more challenges with the new, the new breed of people moving into town where it's a lot getting, I think the schools are going to get a lot more competitive at the lower ages, and you're going to have to deal with a different environment going forward, and I think that's going to be a challenge for the schools. Thank you.
Same question? Thanks. Well, as far as to the school committee, I think, you know, probably the thing that I can offer that's best is my different perspectives that I could offer to the board. I'm a graduate of Littleton High School, so I know, you know, I have a sense of what it's like when you're actually in the school during the school day. I've, you know, I've had experience advising the Board of Elementary and Secondary when I was in high school, and then I went on to work in higher education, so I understand, you know, the transition that students make when they leave the public schools and go out into their career or into college, and I think that'll be helpful. As far as our school system goes, I'm the first person to say I love the school system. I, you know, couldn't have asked for something better when I was there. Something I think, you know, I'd love to see worked on a little bit better would be, you know, civic education, civic learning and participation. You know, all throughout the state and country, we see big emphasis on STEM fields, and I know when I was in, in the high school, I always thought that that was something that was a little bit missing was, is that piece.
Thank you. Well, candidates, how do you feel your experiences with the schools, whether as a parent or as a student, or whatever experience you've had with the schools, will help you as a member of the school committee? Do you want to switch it up for?
No, go ahead, Mark. Go ahead. So I, so what are my experiences with the schools? I've only had experience as a parent, so, and as an occasional school committee visitor. I haven't made many of the meetings because they're conflicted with the library meetings. But as a parent, I, I've seen all kids go through all, my kids have been through all the schools now, and I can see how, how the different schools interact and their different needs. And I think I understand the budgeting in the schools from my interactions with high school and the NEAS and things like that. And, and I, I feel like I have a good handle on what goes on at the schools. I've also participated in the school council meetings last year, trying to change instituted through the, through that policy and through the pursuit of excellence. I have an idea what's going on and what's coming forward. So I think I have a well-rounded grasp of what's going on.
Thank you. As I kind of mentioned, I was a lifelong resident of Littleton, so I have been, you know, I was educated all the way through the Littleton Public School System. I didn't have the pleasure of attending at the new middle school. When I was there, it was still the greenhouse that used to be in its place. But when I was in high school, I always thought, I always thought it was a shame that there wasn't somebody who had graduated from the system who was, who was on the board at that time. Happy to see that Alex took the initiative to run and to run the board. But I always thought that there was a perspective that was, was missing when you would hear about the budgets being debated and the different policies being debated, but you didn't actually have somebody who was on the ground and knew what it was like there day to day. And so I'm glad that, you know, I can offer that, that position. I spent a lot of time in Littleton Public School, so.
And actually, we'll switch it up, Mike. So I want you to answer this one first. What do you see as the most significant challenges facing our school district?
I mean, obviously, the easy answer is to say the budget. Every year, the budget seemed to get tougher and tougher regardless of what is happening with the economy. I know from my work, last year I was working on budgets, and it seems like there's never enough money to do exactly what you want to do with it. I think that, you know, that's obviously an issue is, is the budgets each year trying to, to, you know, get everything done that needs to get done.
Mark, what do you see as the most significant challenges facing our school district?
Well, outside of the budget, which is always an issue for everyone in town, I think, I think that the culture of the town is changing, and we're getting to be much more of a high-tech. And we, you're getting the conflicts now between the high-tech and the, the old Littleton residents and what the education expectations are of those, and I think that was going to be a huge challenge on how you're educating and keeping everyone challenged and prepared going forward.
Couple, couple of questions. I'll ask the same one to both of yous, and it'll probably be from the perspective that you have. So, Mark, you've been sort of participant as a parent and in the various things, you know, there. How do you see applying that experience, moving a role from the involvement that you have had to the policy involvement from the school committee perspective?
I, I'm not sure exactly where you're leading. I don't.
So, a lot of the stuff that you've been doing, you know, from pursuit of excellence to the school council, it is, is what we call the execution phase of the pieces here, but the school committee does policy and oversight. So what do you see the, applying that experience that you have to the, to a sort of revised role here?
So I don't know that the pursuit of excellence applies directly, but I've been doing policy and budgeting and the oversight from the library. It's, it's the, it's the same tasks on a, on a different scale, on a different playing field effectively. So I, I mean, the library has policies, the library has a budget and the oversight. So instead of dealing with the superintendent, we're doing the library director and new library director hopefully soon. So we've been through several of those processes and contract negotiations on a smaller scale and things like that. So a lot of the same things from the library will be applicable.
And Mike, same question, your perspective is from sort of the involvement that you've had with the Board of Higher Ed and the other pieces there. How do you see applying that towards that experience to the Littleton School Committee?
Well, I, first of all, you know, I'd love to get, jump, jump right in with the budget. I've had experience going through the state budget. I advocated for state budgets. I've been helping people up to write the state budgets. So I, you know, that's one thing that I could offer is I could jump right in and bring that experience with me to help, you know, to rally, be helpful, get the money that Littleton needs. Also, you know, it's been six years now, I guess, or, yeah, six years since I graduated, but I still have, you know, a fresh memory of, you know, all that was, you know, going on when I was in the, in the school system, so I'd be happy to, you know, bring that to the table as soon as I, as soon as I'm on board.
So I picked these two phrases up while you did your, your talks there. Mark, you used the term slow to adapt, and then I missed a couple of the other changes that you were suggesting there. My biggest question is, is how? Given that, you know, you recognize the tight budget pieces there and there's a lot of initiatives underway, how would you go about advocating and recommending we implement some of the changes that you sort of alluded to that we might be slow to adapt or other initiatives?
So how could we be faster to adapt? Well, I think we need to come up with more creative solutions and not be afraid to try things. And a good example, I think the middle school has taken a lot of leadership on trying new things. Not everything works, and, and they will abandon the things that, abandon is probably not the right word, but when, when the things don't work, they make an assessment of whether, you know, it's salvageable or how to salvage the program. And I think that same practice could be better applied to some of the other schools as well. So I, I think some people in, in town, and this doesn't just apply to schools, I think it goes universal, are afraid of change, right? And we need to be less afraid of what's going on and be willing to try, and, you know, it's okay for the things to fail, and, you know, you admit that, you know, we made an effort and what we did, you know, didn't work, but we learned from it and we'll try something going forward.
Thank you. And then, Mike, you mentioned specifically civics and STEM. Again, given, given the balance of curriculum that we're trying to maintain and budget constraints, how would you go about advocating we do changes in those areas?
Well, namely, you know, one thing that would hopefully be budget neutral would be to, to make our student councils more active. I think being on student council and student government is the best thing I could have ever done in my life. It's the, you know, I think I've learned more from doing those things than I've learned in any classroom I've been in. And, you know, I was disappointed when I was in the high school and middle school, our student councils weren't as active as, as I think they could be. So I think the school committee, the administrators, they could ask more of their student councils, ask for their input when things come up. I know we have a student member, but give them more of a say in, you know, what goes on in the schools and get their feelings on things. And, you know, hopefully, having something like that will get people involved. You know, there's no better lesson than civic learning and getting involved in it yourself. So I think that would be one way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'll be the same question for both of you all. First, thank you for stepping forward, and I know you appreciate that greatly.
I know you appreciate that greatly. Should a school committee member try to influence education in the district? And if you believe yes, how can a school committee member influence education in the district?
What do you mean by influence?
What do I mean by influence? In other words, we've talked about, you've mentioned actually some of the things yourself as far as slow to adapt, whatever. Um, so if you're going to be advocating that and if you think you should have an, uh, be a person of influence in the community, how would you go about doing that so that you could bring about these speed or speeding up that adaption, so to speak?
Um, I, well, it depends on, yes, I think you should be influ, you should be influencing, but not, um, I think you should give a superintendent, Punchy, the, uh, tools and the means to go about and the encouragement to go about making change. And, um, um, give him the license to fail, right? Make sure he's not afraid to try something that might not work, right? Um, just as long as he, you know, he understands what's going to happen, what the ramifications are for the failure for the students and how they're going to, um, adapt. So, um, do I think I should be advocating at a teacher level or anything like that? No, right? That's not, um, um, my job as a school committee member. But yes, I think you, um, you advocate for change through policy changes and through your direct employee, right, but not at lower levels.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I think, I think definitely the school committee members have a role in, um, in influencing education. Again, I don't think that they should necessarily be in the classroom every morning, you know, saying what the curriculum's going to be for that day. But they should definitely, you know, they're setting policies, they're setting the tone for the, for the school system, they're setting the priorities, you know. For example, what I was just talking about between STEM and civic learning, you know, that's going to affect the education even if it's just an upper level, you know, policy. No, and it, you know, how you go about doing is difficult. You have a lot of, you know, stakeholders you have to be involved with. Obviously, you answer to the taxpayers and voters, but you're ultimately, you know, dealing with the education of these students, so you, you know, you have to look out for their interests is number one as well. Um, so, you know, I, if it was me, I'd, you know, be open to hearing what students think needs to be, you know, the students think need to be different, what the, the voters think needs to be different, um, what other boards think, you know, should the priority be, um, and then work from there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to echo what my colleague said, but this is great that you've applied. I think it's great that we're interviewing two people. It's, it's clear that we have, um, two people who would serve this town well. Um, and this is probably the least fun of all the processes you're going to go through. So, uh, one of the problems being this late in the chain of asking questions is a question you might have asked and asked, so I'll up the ante and make it tougher. Given, we know that you're going to be part of a committee and the committee has to work together, a board that has to work together, um, to come up with overall. But you must, because you expressed your interest in becoming part of the school committee, you must see a need, um, to do something. And if you were given unto your own power to make one decision of what you would change at the school committee and that was, and, and you were free to do that, what would that be? And I guess we'll start with you.
Um, that is a good question. It's a tough question. Um, I guess the one thing, you know, just keeping with, I guess, the theme that I've talked about tonight, I think what I would love to see, um, is once a year to have a joint school committee meeting between the school committee and the student council in the high school. I think that would be, um, a, you know, a hugely beneficial thing for the school committee and for the students to be able to talk to each other directly. Um, I think it's great that we have a student member who sits on the board, but I think having somebody, you know, actually getting to sit down face to face with that many people who are involved in the schools would give, you know, an extra voice to the school committee that will be helpful.
Good.
Thanks, Mark.
Um, I, as I said, I don't really have an agenda on anything that I would like to see changed, but I'd like, I think it'd be important, I think having a meeting where you have more open and free-form discussion with the public and stakeholders and parents and everyone to just get their opinions on what needs. There's a lot of good ideas in town, um, a lot of people that are probably afraid or don't want to participate in the school committee meetings and things like that, but having just open houses or, you know, meet the candidate type, uh, things where people can come and drop you lines and have questions and you have open frank discussions on ideas. I actually had just, um, at work today, we're having, uh, this week, we're having a company-wide meeting, sixty-some hours of meetings I had to leave. Um, and when I left, we were having an open discussion on how security issues should work. And just having that where you throw it on an idea, say, we want to solve problem X and have everyone say, have you thought about this or have you thought about this? I think would be a great, um, um, thing to start instituting in town, uh, both on the school committee and other boards to get more feedback on what we should be doing and get more people involved and take advantage of other good ideas. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to get to a little bit more personal level. You have first graders coming into the districts, you have seniors leaving the district. You have an opportunity to talk to the first graders about coming into the district. I'd like to hear what you both would say to the first graders and to the seniors leaving. We'll start with you, Mike.
Um, well, for the first graders, I can, I can remember actually going into first grade in the school system many years ago and I was nervous.
Wasn't that many years ago?
Um, I remember I was nervous. I think that my mother would probably tell you that she remembers me not getting off the school bus and not wanting to get on the school bus to go into the, to the schools. So I, you know, I talked, I want to talk to them about, you know, what it's like going from kindergarten to first grade and how it's going to be different and why they shouldn't be nervous about it and why, um, you know, it's going to be just as, you know, it's just as fun as it's going to be before. What I'd like to hear is that you're going to, what I wish somebody told me is that you're going to, even though you might not be with the same friends that you were with in kindergarten, you're going to meet new people in first grade and have a good time. As far as seniors who are graduating, um, I'd tell, I'd tell them just to, you know, you know, do, do what it is what you want to do and stick with it. You know, when I left Littleton High School, it was always my plan to, I, I always thought that I might want to go to law school, um, but there were a lot of things that came up that, you know, I was, wasn't sure if I was going to actually end up making there. And I decided last minute basically that I was going to go into this program that I was really excited to go into. Um, and, you know, I think that's important for graduating seniors to do is to, you know, a lot comes up when you're an eighteen-year-old graduating from, from high school. So, you know, just stick with, you know, what your plan is.
Was Ellen the Amy bus driver?
She was my bus driver. I love you, Mrs. Ham.
Ellen Ham is great. Um, so the first graders, I love the enthusiasm they show for the school and, and, and I love to talk to, I'm, I don't remember first grade myself, but my, I remember my kids going to first grade. And, and it's great to see the enthusiasm and, and the energy that they bring to the school and the excitement they have. And it's fun to talk to them about what they want to learn and what they want to be and, and the seniors don't have that same enthusiasm typically, right? We somehow beat it out of them over the twelve years where they're not nearly as excited about school as they were when they were six. The graduating seniors, I agree, you want to tell them to, you know, be themselves and, and, you know, find their place in the world and pursue what's exciting to them, whether it's, you know, a high-tech job or a low-tech job, right? Be comfortable in your skin and pursue what interests.
I too appreciate you both. I'm glad you're doing the applications.
I feel that as well. Um, we're really lucky to have such great candidates and you're obviously really passionate about this role and a lot of what you both have said really resonates with me, so thank you for applying. Appreciate that. Um, maybe just a little bit of kind of get-to-know-you questions. Um, so from a career perspective, what do you do for a profession? So, Mike, I can see you are on the Deputy General Counsel. Um, and so what, where do you see yourself headed with that? What's your plan for your career?
Um, well, nothing in the immediate future. I love my, I love the job that I'm in right now. I've been there for now just one full week. I've been with the department for a month and a half. I've got no plans to leave right now. I, you know, I think I'm, I've always, like I said before, I've always wanted to be a lawyer and I, I've loved education. I've been involved with it since I was, I guess, I would say when I started being on student council in fourth grade. Um, and so I think it's a natural fit. I think I, I, my, you know, goals of my career, I see myself working in education, so in higher education and some sort of, you know, like legal field there.
I do software development. I, um, so I have a, my, I have a degree in chemistry and computer science and a master's in chemistry that I've never, ever used in my life. Um, I've been a, in the computer software development field since ninety-seven, I think. And I can see myself at my, where I'm at until I retire, hopefully not too long from now.
Only one more question for me and actually that plays really well into my question. So I too have a chemistry degree that I've never used and I'm also very passionate about technology and that's what my question's relating to is technology in the classroom. And really, it's kind of an open-ended question. Any thoughts you have about that?
Um, I think technology in the classroom is a mixed bag, right? Some students learn a lot from it, some students, it's a huge distraction, right? So it's, it's something you really have to balance. I know for my own, my own children, you put a computer in front of my youngest and give him an assignment to do and he won't do it, all right? Because there's the whole world of Google out there, right? And you have to balance that in the classroom with what you're actually trying to instruct. Some of the kids, now, you give them, they need that different experience to actually learn and it's a learning style for some of it and some of it. Um, I mean, some kids, you put them in front of the, the Khan Academy videos and, or something like that and they'll get a lot out of it. Some of them, you put it in, they're just staring out from space. So, technology is important, but it shouldn't be the only means of delivering.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, technology is clearly huge and no school system nowadays could go, you know, go through the system without making a huge emphasis on it. Um, it's obviously something that's not going away, so, you know, kids who are in the school system now are going to need to know and be, you know, adept with it when they go off into their careers or onto, you know, whatever they do next. Um, I think it's important to balance, like Mark was saying, you don't want them to have, you know, a completely one-dimensional view of their school system being, you know, on an iPad or something like that. Um, so balancing that is important. It's obviously expensive, you know, to implement some of these technological, um, you know, systems, so balancing that I think is important, but it's definitely important because, you know, you see it nowadays, people who, you know, kids, myself, you know, we spend our whole lives on our smartphones, so I think, you know, it's important to teach these kids when they're younger how to, you know, properly use them and something like that.
I'd like to add one thing to, on that, if I may. I think we rely a little bit on the technology too much too. Like the math classes now are all calculator-based, right? Especially at the higher levels. If you ask the kids to go off and graph something, they don't know how to graph it without a calculator often, right? Tell them how to, ask any, I bet you that no kid in the high school can figure out how to do a square root, right, without a calculator, right? And those are the things that we learned in school that, you know, they're not really practical, that you, you don't have to learn, know how to do them, but you have to know the thinking process behind them. And I think technology is often a crutch to get people to be able to do the process without understanding what they're really doing. And, and, um, and it's kind of weird for me to say anything because I am in the high-tech field, but I do think we're relying a little bit too much on it and not teaching, um, some of the basics that go behind it. Um, it's okay for them to learn after they know how to do a square root, they can just hit the button on the calculator that can do it for you, but it would be nice if they actually knew how to do some of the harder problems.
Can you agree more?
Back to me and I'll have to say, I remember my first day of school too. I want to have a go, was in this school, I had Miss Cole and she scared the hell out of me.
Ms. Hannah Dodge?
All right. I said no softball. Just one question I have of both here and it has to do with, uh, something that's happened with my kids. Granted, uh, time has gone by and things have changed, but I still think it's important. How and when should teachers be in contact with parents? For what reasons? For what purposes? And for what results? Do you want to start?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a tough question for me to answer. I haven't been a parent yet and, um, I could ask my parents what their perspective is, but that's something where, um, I would rely on the insight of the, my fellow board members and, you know, I'd want to ask the, the, yeah. And I'd want to ask, I'd want to ask the, um, the teachers what they think, you know, they're the ones who are, who actually know what comes from that, whether it's beneficial or, or hurtful and, and how to properly do it. So I, that's something I'd seek input, input from, you know, the, the school administration and the faculty on that. And, um, you know, it's, it's not something that I have a huge opinion on right now because I haven't had the experience yet to, to know how effective it is, but obviously parents, you know, children under eighteen, you know, they're still, their parents still depend on children, so obviously they want to know what's going on in their, um, you know, educational lives and, and it's the best we can do.
Um, I think that teachers should be encouraged to actually communicate with the parents more than they currently are. Um, generally, um, I think when the kids are doing anything out of whatever becomes the established norm for that child, the, the parent should be notified, um, in a, in a, you know, just a heads-up pen away. Um, I think the, right now, most of the communication with, uh, from between parents and stu, parents and teachers is either initiated by the parent, it's at a fifteen-minute parent-teacher conference twice a year, or it's through a report card where most of the report cards, the teachers have a little form that they check that says, and all of the comments are the same, so you know that the teacher didn't actually fill out anything personally, just say participates well in class and a pleasure to have, things like that. It's not like really giving feedback on how your children is interacting in school. Um, I mean, you see the letter grade and you can say, well, he looks like he's progressing, but you really don't know where they are along the scale. Um, and I think more interaction between, um, parents and teachers should be encouraged. Um, also, the, um, teachers know where the parents are coming from and vice versa, and so I think the kids will end up with a more well-rounded education.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, how would you like to proceed at this point?
Last time, I mean, when we've done these types of things at school committee, we've asked for a motion on the floor and one, we'd get nominated with second. Uh, if there's any other nominations, great. If there's not, then we would close the nomination. That's one way to do it. The other way would be, and I remember this when we, uh, pointed, had a joint meeting for Tyler Gray's resignation a few years ago. I think we just went around and we all voted for a particular candidate and took the tally. Um, I'm open to either process.
Good ideas, Wood. Right, maybe we'll discuss a little bit and then conclude. Okay. Distracted or, or, you know, however it works, but I think, um, it might, you know, what some of you say might change where I am with this or the other way around.
Do you want to start with the school committee first?
Sure.
Okay.
Alex, do you have any particular comments or points of view on what we've heard so far tonight?
Well, firstly, I think the conversation we heard tonight was marvelous, um, and in front of a new audience, which is nice for us. I think both candidates are forward-thinking and bring a lot to the table and to the conversation in the town as a whole, I think. Uh, it's not often that we talk about these ideas in the classroom, uh, in these settings or even, even at just a normal school committee meeting, because we're working on policies and procedures and the administration of the district rather than the, um, not necessarily the higher level, but the different thematic and educational trends, uh, going on today. Uh, I think either candidate would be a good fit, uh, for the school district and for the school committee. Wish we had, you know, two vacancies or...
Resigning?
Not yet.
Obviously, thank you both for, for coming out. I know you both and, um, I think you're both good candidates. You both offer different perspectives. Um, I, shut the door on this. I, um, this is somewhat difficult to say because I live a couple doors away from Mark and we spent some time with the, the bus stop and, uh...
I know where you live.
But, um, I think, Mark, although you, you have a lot to offer, I think Mike's got a new perspective, a different perspective that might be a better fit with the, uh, the current makeup of the board. And certainly the, your one-week-old job and the... And certainly, the, your one-week-old job and the, the place that you act gives you a deeper perspective into some stuff, into some areas of the education system that I know I can't speak to with any intelligence. And it might be a nice resource to have on the board.
Well, thank you both for coming forward. This is the second time I've offered an appointment. It's always difficult trying to figure out the, the differences here, because I think you both bring different perspectives here. One, as somebody that's been long-term involved in the schools from the perspective of the parent and participating there, and then the other one, sort of at the other end of the spectrum, gone through the system, and then entering the, the career market of, of how you help schools moving forward. I think one of the things that just strikes me is, is just important as a looking at doing an appointment versus the election, is somebody that has the track record that's been involved with the schools and participating in the various town activities going on, whether it's directly with the schools or the other town pieces there, which kind of weighs a little bit on my mind, is I'm trying to figure out the, how to balance the different, different perspectives that each of yous could possibly bring to our board at this point.
Again, Alex, I don't know if you meant that this was hard for them, but this is clearly difficult for us. Whenever we have two candidates, it's better, because we get to compare and contrast, there's no question about it. But it's never fun to have to make a decision between two people who are clearly willing to help out. So it's a very difficult situation for us to be in. I'm glad we don't do this very often. I'm glad we leave it to the voters most of the time and let them sort it out. Having said that, I agree with everybody that I don't think there's a wrong decision to be made here. I think both candidates are clearly have some perspective that would be valuable to us, and they're clearly committed to helping out. They've proven that in their other endeavors. I will say that I find it particularly intriguing that Mike has a perspective that we are getting from Alex, but also Mike's been through four years of higher education. You know, Alex is halfway, about halfway through. Well, exactly, four, plus, four years plus. That's right. Well, I don't, you're a lawyer, I don't count until you pass the bar, so. Yeah, exactly. And I think I, that, that perspective of having someone who's been through our system and then seen how it applies to their ability to, to comport themselves in higher education and beyond, along with the fact that you've been involved at the State House in a couple of different roles, and you're going to continue that, I find that very compelling. I, you know, I think Mark's experience are very valuable, but the Mike's stuff is very intriguing, and I'm very interested in trying to take advantage of that.
Given that the vacancy was created by a very youthful person.
As all has been said, two very fine candidates, again, thank you, thank you for coming forward. As far as trying to get as much of a mix as possible on the school committee, certainly we have youth with Alex, we have parents with the other three gents, and Mike is kind of fitting in the middle there. Your outside work that you've been doing on Pursuit of Excellence is deeply appreciated, something we began a couple of years ago, so. And I think you've made some very valuable inputs there. But a lot of the discussion tonight has been, is what perspective do each of you bring? And as far as a mix with the school committee. And I think as far as adding to that mix, so to speak, is that Mike brings that education, as do you, brings a week's worth of job experience now. You certainly much, much more, you know, full career at this point. But then the, the youth also of, you know, moving into the middle twenties. And that's why I would lean towards Mike at this point.
Okay. So there's one comment you made that I won't hold against you about teachers should spend a little more time talking to parents. I want to tell you that the teachers spent way too much time talking to my parents. But in the end, they agreed with me. So, so I'm, I think I'm going to approach this a couple different words. I'm really impressed with, with how you presented yourself tonight. And, and you're, you're clearly a good choice. I'm also impressed with you. And I, and my impression with you grew as you began to work your way through the interview process, and you began to bring out some of your thoughts. I became, what, what was clearly leading one way quickly shifted back to central. So, so I'm thinking, well, we've got two very good candidates here. Can't take two candidates. So what turns me in the direction that I'm going was, was something that was brought up, and, and it wasn't something that was the point of a question, but it was the discussion about open and free form for discussions. And that took me to the point as, well, this, this is an appointed, temporary fill-in position for an elected position. And an elected official, their primary job is to serve the people who elected them. And they try to do that to do a great job in the school committee. It's more about a fit with the town than it is with your fellow members. Surprising that I would ever say that. But, and I think that's what makes the difference for me and makes me swing towards Mark, is that he's clearly connected to the people that ultimately he would have to answer to. And his other statement that he's not political in any way, shape, or form, well, education should not be political. Unfortunately, it is everywhere. But, so that's what, that's what makes me leaning towards Mark.
Again, thank you both for putting in. I think the town has done, whomever gets elected to, appointed tonight has the opportunity to be elected in May. That's a nice thing. So a preview to that May election has been seen tonight. I like both candidates, but I think the perspective that Mike brings is to the board and to the committee, I mean, to the school committee with just a different view, you know? I like the idea of his, his knowledge of the state and the way the state operates, and maybe, you know, get us through some tough times that blew my head.
Agree as well. Again, thank you both. We're really, really, really lucky. But I'd say, just to be brief, my analysis is the same as Mr. DeCros and Jim's. I think your combination of kind of your history with the town education and kind of where your heads are with the different things you're involved in is intriguing, to use the word as well. So if I had a, if I had a vote today, it would just come out.
Once again, thanks for both of you. I, some of the comments, Mark, that you may hit were perfectly on what I was thinking, as far as, you once made a statement, it, I think it was, try something different, and if it fails, I just, I love that. I love people to go out and take that chance. And on the other hand, Mike, I thought you were right on on some of the situations that you talked about, that being beneficial to the town is your background with the state that could probably help us so tremendously. So I'll leave it at that. I'm, I'm up in the air, but, Mr. Chairman, how would you like to proceed? Would we?
Go ahead and post the straw poll, and we'll all just make a vote.
Do you want to do a motion, or you want to just do it as a straw?
All right, go ahead, do the motion.
I move the Court of Selectmen and the remaining members of the school committee vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, subsection eleven, to appoint Mike Mazzoni to fill the vacancy in the school committee through May twenty-fifteen annual town election.
Second.
Moved in second to have Mike Mazzoni fill the last position. All those in favor that nomination signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, congratulations.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Please play again.
Now, Mr. Town Administrator, seeing that it's eight o'clock and we have...
I think you should open the hearing and then go to the Finance Committee and then get back to the hearing in half an hour.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Nice to meet you, as well.
Is gone.
Yeah.
Is someone being addressed? Has it been your place?
We approved a sign at our last meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
It's eight o'clock. We have two separate things that are happening. We have a joint meeting. Excuse me. With a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, they have asked to meet with us. At eight o'clock, we also have a public hearing. What I'm going to do, if it's okay with a public hearing, I'm, I'm going to open it by law, and I'm going to, not, not close it. We're going to go do it after we talk to the, to the Finance Committee. All right, so, we don't have to actually move.
No, you just have to, at eight o'clock, you can reopen the hearing and then table the matter until the conclusion of the joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
I know. Call open the public hearing of Act three, five, twenty-nine, King Street, all alcohol license, and we'll suspend that until we have a discussion, joint discussion with the Finance Committee. And Betsy, if you're a group, would like to come forward, we'll, we'll deal with it now.
Come on forward.
Come on forward.
Please come forward.
Bring money, though.
I know both, both committees have information packets that were prepared by our Finance Department, but, Betsy, I'd like to have you open it up. It was a request of your committee. And we had discovered, we had a nice discussion a while ago about some of the capital decisions that have to be made. You had some interesting points. So I'd like you to bring out, or have the Finance Committee as a whole talk about some of these issues.
Okay. Well, I mean, partly, it was just opportunity to get the whole process going, the whole budget process, which we do every year. It's always important to, to level-set everyone and to share priorities and so on. This year, obviously, there's a lot of things going on and a lot of opportunities, and we thought it was a good time to have some conversations, as we have the, the discussion about the, the new fire station, how we're going to do that and so on, at the same time. It's, it's an opportunity to sit back and to look at the whole, the whole town and everything that needs to get done. And so open discussion, kind of like what happened with the school department, let's talk to everybody in town, see what's going on. Besides, rather than just saying, "This is the fire department, and we need to address that," we need to look at the whole, and I'm not picking on the fire department by any chance, but to look at the big picture. Some people think the roads really need more mon-, more funding in the roads. We have, we did, spent a lot of money on a, on a committee and a plan on what the maintenance needs to be done in all our buildings. But we're severely underfunding at the moment. So we want to look at the big picture and all these items together, and not just go up to the point solutions and say, "How should we be funding? Where do we want to fund? How do we want to do these things?" And so that was, that was one of the topics that we wanted to discuss. And anybody else wants to add more to it? Brad, does that?
Pretty much covered it. Again, I think the, if we can get agreement that together, what we should be doing is looking at the whole issue and how we go forward over the next three or four years, in terms of how much we're willing to, to fund maintenance, whether it's roads or buildings, whether it's equipment that different departments want. And I think it should be, you know, the PMBC should weigh in on the facilities plan. I mean, we spent fifty thousand dollars on the facilities plan. We underfunded it the first year. We're going to be underfunding it this year unless we do something drastic. Ten or eleven years ago, we put together a roads plan when the town was in pretty tough financial straits. We knew then we were underfunding road maintenance, and Jim's group has done a fantastic job with the money we give them, but we just aren't giving them enough money. We just drive around town, the roads are deteriorating. So, and put on top of that, large projects. You know, we have, we have the fire department coming in for a new fire station. We have a grassroots group going around town, looking to put in new fields. The, you know, is that something that some board is going to grab a hold of and want to be an ombudsman for? I don't know what the next thing down the road after that is, whether it's...
Study for library, too, right?
A library study is coming up. And then what's the next going after that? So I, I really think we need to challenge ourselves. And I think it's, you know, selectmen, school committee, I think, should be involved, because they are the keepers, if you will, of the four, the largest square footage that we have in town is our schools, and a big piece of the maintenance program is for the schools. And Jim, obviously, for the roads. And also the water commissioners. We're in a situation where last year, the water department had to burn its reserves to balance its budget. What are they going to do? You know, are they keeping up with the maintenance of the infrastructure? They're going to have to paint one of the water towers, which is three quarters of a million dollars. Every time we put in a, we tear up a road and put in a new road, should they be putting in a new main? I don't know the answer to those things. But I think if we were to put together a holistic plan, we could all sit back and say, "Okay, well, pick and choose what we can do, or if we need to do more, how do we fund it?" And it's never fun to have to go to the town and look for more money. But if you don't want your buildings to fall apart, you don't want your roads to fall apart anymore, how do we try to fund the whole thing?
I'd say the biggest particular priority in this year's cycle that I would hope would be different than in prior years is to reconcile two messages we've been hearing consistently from the Finance Department in their excellent work and analysis. And that's an annual attempt to balance a budget, maintaining current-level services, current staffing, et cetera, and then long-term projections, which take into account projected expenses, largely personnel, and then projected revenues, and their accuracy has been pretty good, in knowing that this is structural deficit. And I would hope that in this year's budget process, we'll do what we haven't done in the past and make reconciling that a part of the process. The capital needs, the maintenance needs are all there. They need to be accounted for somewhere, whether it's in the operational budget or whether it's in, you know, capital delays. We're fortunate in the, you know, in outgoing years, we have a number of significant debt coming off of the, the books. So certain projects, whether it's the fire station or whatever, can be accommodated within our current schedule. But our needs may be beyond that. So one way or the other, I, I hope we break the cycle of being very intently aware of a structural deficit and then operating in the short term on a current-year budget that doesn't pay any heed to that. So I think we, we really need to, you know, have a reckoning of those two things.
Mooney, if I could, we had a discussion today, but you prepared this packet that's...
It's just, it's basically an update for you.
If you could.
Sure. Okay, good. Basically, I wanted to start with the resolution of the fiscal two thousand and fifteen operating budget. I am pleased to report that we are in balance. We do have a, a small surplus compared to our, you know, thirty-seven million dollars in expenditures, about fifteen thousand dollars with the final cherry sheet, day-day figures, and our local receipts. So we're in, in good financial health for fiscal two thousand and fifteen on the operating side. If we look forward into the fall special town meeting, we do have some funding that would be available for appropriation, should there be some desire to, to make expenditures. By way of remaining snow and ice funds that were not expended for fiscal two thousand and fourteen, we budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two different areas by way of a deficit, for four hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand in appropriations. So we spent about four hundred and fourteen thousand last year for snow and ice removal. We also got a reimbursement from FEMA in the amount of sixty-two thousand. So we have approximately three hundred thousand or two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars that is available for appropriation in the fall. In the past and, and under our financial policies, we use this money for one-time expenditures only, if we're going to appropriate it, because in any given year, it may not be there. So it should not go to operating expenditures. In looking at the, the draft warrant, I did see that there are a few items that might be earmarked for this for one-time expenditures. for this, for one-time expenditures. There's a master plan update in the amount of $50,000 to increase funding for master planning, and then there's a request for elder and human services for a needs assessment for $25,000. And again, just as an example, if those were funded, that would leave remaining $222,000 for either, you could put it into other capital projects, you could put it into capital stabilization, you could put it into a proposed excluded debt stabilization fund that I'll get into in a little bit, but it is available. And then I took a look forward, based on the Finance Committee's comments at their last few meetings, in looking at kind of a holistic approach on what's out there for capital and other unfunded obligations from 2016 and beyond. For the 2016 operating budget, I did put in the draft calendar based on what the Finance Committee looked at at their last meeting, so I'd encourage any feedback on the dates, coordinating around joint meetings and what might work or what might not work. And then, what we're looking to do is, the beginning of October, submit the budget documents to the departments and have them do the end of October. I had recommended that we request at least two budget scenarios, level staffing, so what it would be to maintain the existing staffing level and services, and a mission budget, which is what we asked for last year also, which helped the boards decide and target particular areas that we were able to enhance services, for example, for the Council on Aging and the Director of Elder and Human Services Departments, to add some hours for outreach workers. So I think it's helpful to have that budget scenario. I don't know that we'll be able to support anything in that, but it's helpful to have the items identified early on. We would need to get priorities from the Board of Selectmen on any, you know, targeted service enhancements or services that would be required to be retained in case there are some issues going forward, both for the boards and the School Committee and the Finance Committee. I did also provide five-year projections to give you an idea of where these deficits are coming from and why they're appearing. So on the revenue side, for fiscal '16 through '20, I put a modest increase in local receipts, 1%, which is primarily excise tax for the town. A 1% growth factor in net school state aid, a 1% growth factor in municipal state aid, which is kind of realistic in what's happened in the last few years. New growth, we're estimating at $750,000 for '16, $500,000 for '17, and $200,000 in years '18, '19, and '20. The Point project, some of the other projects that are in the pipeline, like 15th grade road, those are all contributing to these estimates. They will change and might be modified.
Excuse me, does anybody have any update on the Point and Market Basket's impact on that? Is, is there any feedback from, basically, Market Basket? Are they gonna open when they say they're gonna open, or is this one of the projects that they're gonna put on hold? Because Arthur Teach has went out for a billion dollars worth of funding. He's gonna have to start paying for that.
We don't have an official word back from Sam Park, who's in communication directly with Arthur Teach DeMullis about what the opening date will be for Littleton. I mean, we have every indication that Littleton will be among those Market Basket new stores that do, in fact, open, and the issue is only, does it open before or after the window of the holidays? The building is all but ready. It will be occupiable as of October 15th. There's a, they have an internal management decision to make at DeMullis Market Basket, Inc., about whether they can bring in the, you know, the staff, and they're not gonna bring in a new staff during the holiday window, so it'll either be before or after, and we're hopeful that maybe in the next few days, we'll have a definitive date. And I've told Sam, we're happy to, if it need be, we're happy to know it's January or February rather than November, but we're, it's all about making sure that it, in fact, opens. And the build, and from an assessment standpoint, the buildings that are there, I mean, we got more than enough to go on to grab the, whatever new growth has come.
To nail it.
And the buildings are continuing to be built.
So on the expense side, we've got a few projections in there that we're dealing with. In the fiscal 2016 to '20, we're pushing a 2.76% growth in town department budgets, which is primarily made up of step increases that would be due to employees that are eligible, and then a 1% increase into operating expenses, so that averages to the 2.76. I have projected in the '16 school appropriation, a $500,000 increase, which was a number that we had discussed in a joint meeting last year, just as a starting point, so that's almost a 3% increase. And then in the years, starting in '17 to '20, a 2.7% average increase, just to get a feel for what that growth would look like. And then I have a 10% average growth in fringe or employee benefits costs. This is the biggest growth factor in the operating budget. The health insurance for both retirees and active employees is kind of our biggest cost driver. Using those assumptions, the structural deficits appear in '16, starting at $107,000 and then through '20 at just about $1.6 million. You know, I'm looking at that $107,000, and it's less than we've seen in previous years starting out the budget process, and I would remind you, it's the new growth that we're projecting for the commercial developments that we have going on right now that's driving that down lower than we normally see. We'll have, you know, a lot of work to get through state aid projections and see what the government's gonna, the governor's gonna come up with his version of the budget to start things off in January or February.
Or her.
Yeah, or her. And then, going out into the capital and multi-year fiscal planning for other unfunded obligations, I took a look at, again, at the Finance Committee's request at a lot of the large items that we have, to include our facilities maintenance plan. We have 20 years' worth of projected expenditures for that. I have a 10-year capital plan where we tweak it every year, it gets updated every year, but I have that now for the town departments, which is mostly equipment and some small facility upgrades. We know about the fire station, so that's incorporated in here. We know what our OPEB obligations are, so I've incorporated that in here. And roadway. So those are the major dropers. Those are not all of them. I would remind the board that the facilities plan covered seven buildings. It did not incorporate all of our buildings, so, you know, realistically, the facilities plan's probably larger than its stated here. So I put all of those together, and I apologize in advance, these are, there's a lot of worksheets here for you to kind of look through and crunch. So, within the assumptions, I did adjust projects for any known policy vote, so I know that the board, when they adopted the roadway plan back in 2008, adopted the plan with the idea that we were gonna increase the funding by a minimum of 1%. So that's incorporated into these assumptions. OPEB, under our policies, increases by at least 10% annually, so that's incorporated. Items that I don't have votes for, for example, the regular equipment capital plan that we normally fund, I level funded going forward at the same level that we did last year, just to get some numbers on the board. The facilities plan, we don't have a policy vote on that, so I funded it at the same level, about a half a million dollars that we did this fiscal year going forward. That doesn't mean it can't change, it's just what I'm using right now. So with those assumptions in place, we are gonna have some additional revenues available because we do have debt service retiring, and it will be pretty much completely expired in 2020. So that funding can be earmarked for any one of these sources, and those will be policy votes of these boards to decide the way those funding gets spent. I would kind of direct you, I guess, I gave you a lot of summary documents, but on the last page of the packet that I gave you, I referenced any of the policy votes. There's a line marked surplus deficit. This is the additional amount, that line, starting with $297,000 in fiscal '15 and ending at, going out to $707,000 in fiscal '22. These are the additional amounts that could be appropriated for other projects, OPEB, facilities, the fire station, whatever, but any one of those is gonna be done at the expense of the other. So, the good news is we do have funding available to do additional work. It's just a lot of decisions that we're always gonna have to make on what the priorities And I would just point out that the unfunded, you can see what the unfunded amounts are annually for each one of those categories.
Bonnie, come on forward. I think that, if I may, you know, the cooperation that we've had between schools, Selectmen, Finance is great. We were even starting earlier in the process. It's been, it's been really good. You're right, there are decisions that have to be made, and hopefully, we can have discussions about them as they come up and make the right decisions for the taxpayers in the town, so... That's a great start. It's a great start.
I think one thing here is that each year, we've been inching closer and closer to doing things better and better. And, you know, the structural deficit is just one example of that, is we're talking much bigger numbers than we are now, and yes, it, you know, that may only, the increased growth may not be a permanent part of that solution. So, I think the Chair's comment about how we have to do a better job of communicating at the big picture is that next step that's going to get us there, so that when we take and make those tough choices, which we have to make, that we're looking at it from a whole town perspective in doing that. I was really impressed with your comment about zero-based budgeting. I am a big fan of zero-based budgeting. You don't get anything unless you have to have it for some reason. So I think that's a step in the right direction, but I think one of the things we have to look at is that we're all tuned in on our finances and our policies to support those finances, but somewhere along the line, we ought to measure how efficient we are and how well we're doing this, and how well we compare, for instance, road programs or other things that we do, and yes, it's a lot more work for somebody, and, but, how much we spend is important, but how well we spend it is also very important. And the solution is not gonna be found in ever-increasing revenues. Revenues are taxes. That's ever-increasing taxes. The solution has to be found more than just assuming we need more money. We need better ways of using the money that we have, and as hard as that may seem, that's where we have to get, because that's where we'll be. We're having, we're having the same problem everywhere, in the Commonwealth and the country, anywhere, no matter where you look at it, everybody's stressed financially. So those are just, you know, my comments.
You know?
I would just offer that Betsy's opening comments are precisely the direction we wanna be heading, and continue heading in a way, and Alex put it, you know, continuous improvement, and I would say, in the eight, almost nine years now that I've been running town government, I've seen that trend, and it's an upward trend, so that's working well. Our needs exceed our resources, or at least the resources we're willing to allocate. So coming together and making those decisions jointly, and then the beauty of our type of town government is the folks in town, to the lament of many, don't show up at town meeting, but certainly, there is town meeting, there's the opportunity for the folks to speak as to, this is the budget I want for my town. Certainly, the various boards and committees put that budget together, but ultimately, the folks in town get the final vote on that. So there is a consensus, a consensus of a very small percentage, as we've said unfortunately, and more folks that come out, all the better. Nevertheless, that's the town government we choose to live here in, that town. So we have processes in place, there's improvement in those processes, but then, once again, the folks in town do get that ultimate vote.
Anything else tonight?
That is our job, is to do the analysis and to put the information out there for people, so you have an educated consumer and an educated voter, as much as we can, and that's our role. And then, county side, absolutely agree.
You couldn't agree more. Thank you. Your roles, is that the priority? Yeah. Over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And for being so open, look forward to looking, dealing with School Committee and everybody else in town. Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie, thanks on your work, too, because the last page is a valuable piece of information.
Yeah, it's good work, Bonnie. Really makes it so much easier to have the conversations when you got the numbers.
If you could, you opened the public hearings from 529 King Street.
Thank you.
We have the applicants right here. If I could, if it's okay with the board first, no, could I, I'd like to have our town attorney, town council, give us, give the board an update of where our, where our boards stand, our different departments, and...
Sure. Thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm Christie from County Council's office. We've been talking to Roland and the Fire Department over the past couple days, and when this was last on the agenda, a couple weeks ago, about this application and this proposed use, and I know that they've been in contact with the applicant over that same period. And we've been talking about the application that's before you, but also working to make sure that there's a code review done for the change in use from the existing restaurant that has been in place on site previously, and the new proposed use, which is a switch to a, not only a restaurant, but some entertainment and an art store as well. So I know, since this was last on your agenda, there's been, some information has come in, there's been some floor plans, there's some letter from the architect, and I understand that we expect more information to be forthcoming as time goes on to allow Roland to complete their code review, which has not been completed yet. One of the issues that's triggered by this change in use is the question of whether or not a sprinkler system is gonna be required as part of the new, the proposed use, because that's the most important one. But with respect to what's in front of the board on the agenda tonight, it's the liquor license application, and I think there's one important feature of that that's worth noting, which is that approval by this board is the first step in a three-step process, and assuming this board were to act favorably on the liquor license application, it would then go from here to the ABCC, where it would undergo another review there that would take a couple months to complete, and that when, assuming, again, approval by the ABCC, it would then come back to this board for issuance of the liquor license, and at that point, there would need to be a final sign-off on all the code issues by both the building department and by the Fire Department. So, while there may be some code issues outstanding that haven't been resolved finally yet, those are issues that, as part of this three-part process, can continue to be worked on as things move forward. So that's where I believe we're at, as we sit here tonight, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about the process or mobile form, what I know about this proposed use.
I'm Gwen Vivian. I was a former owner of the Acton Jazz Cafe in Acton. I was there for 16 years, and then we moved to Nagog Mall, where I partnered up with my friend Josephine Noguera, who is now my business partner. We were together at Nagog for two years. We had a rather unfortunate experience there. The mall was getting more and more and more empty, and the prices were going higher and higher, and so we lost that opportunity. Regrouped, met with Virginia Wood, who's the owner of the building at 529 King Street, and conceived of this idea to open a building which is not only a restaurant, but a live music establishment and a place to, for local artists to show and also sell their goods. So the idea is... So, the idea is wonderful. It's affordable for us. We put together a wonderful plan. But in putting together the plan, I've encountered a lot of questions regarding the code and the uses of each room, the occupancy of each room, the questions of fire safety and sprinkler installation. A lot of these questions are not quite ready to be fully addressed. There are a lot of people studying the issues from the town and each element in the town, and our architect, and our lawyer. And we're trying to figure out, seriously, a way to make the building work so that we can open in the best way we can and start to present something to the community within codes and within what we can afford. So, some of these issues are still up in the air, although we expect them to be resolved fairly soon. And I wrote a letter for the board, but I don't really want to just read the letter out loud, but I will pass it out, and I'd like to address the issues in the letter and then leave it with you for your consideration. But everything you said is exactly what I wrote in this letter. Because the alcohol license takes such a long time to actually be approved and hang on the wall after the hearing, we would like to go ahead and assume that it's a really good idea for us to have an alcohol license, if in fact, we have an establishment at all, which we will have in some form. The entertainment license has been applied for, but the hearing hasn't been scheduled because it brought up questions around the necessity of a sprinkler system, and we're studying square footage and uses and how all of that is quite going to go. But tonight was planned as an alcohol license hearing, and we'd like to address that issue and at least move on with that, because that's going to be a couple more months. And obviously, we're not going to act on having an alcohol license unless we have a building permit and occupancy permit, and everything else is ready, because we're still developing the kitchen. We're getting all the gas fixtures ready. We're applying for permits to have those installed. We're working on our menu. We're trying to get our staff to work. We won't really be able to generate a lot of income in order to support this building until we have an alcohol license and can open for dinner that people will, most people, many people want to have a glass of wine or a beer with their dinner. And an alcohol license will bump up the revenue ability substantially. But until then, we'd like very much to try and go ahead and open up, at least for lunch, get started without alcohol, without entertainment, and then address these issues of entertainment and what we have to do to comply with code as we go along in the next couple of weeks. But we're here to ask that the alcohol license itself be provisionally accepted, so we can send it to the ABCC and hope to get into business. And this letter outlines that we completely understand. We've got a long way to go in terms of figuring this whole thing out, like what happens when you put a grand piano in the dining room, and what, you know, what does that initiate in terms of public safety. And we're going to do everything we can to make it work. If we can't have live music, if it ends up being something that we can't afford, the changes we need to make in the building in order to make that possible, it's still a viable business. It's still a beautiful restaurant. We can play nice CDs. We can show and sell our art. We're willing to go ahead and to work with the town on whatever it is that we can approve. But tonight, we'd like to approve the alcohol license as scheduled.
Thank you.
Let me hand this up.
I represent Virginia Wood. My name's Rob Ansel.
Who's Rob? You're Rob.
Do you have anything you want to say, Rob?
No, just reiterating what town council said, that I just wanted to say that we, this was the first step. There has been, perhaps the selectmen are aware, a considerable amount of correspondence between the parties and the fire department, Roland Burnier, the building department. And we acknowledge that we have a number of issues that we must address before we open up. Originally, we had planned to open up over the Labor Day weekend. We received a notice that said that you're not ready to open. We honored that, and we intend to address whatever issues that the building department raises before we move forward. So, and that's where we are procedurally.
Well, I'll take one personally. You have a lot of support out there, that no one wants to see this fall through at all. I mean, everyone wants to see it happen. Some people have, I know, when you're in our position, sometimes you get emails and phone calls of half-information and that type of thing. And some of the ones that I have was, why are you trying to stop this? And that's not the case at all. And I agree with you, right, as far as I'm concerned, the board speak, that we are just going to act, we're just acting on the alcohol right now, just to get that going. Board members?
Nothing to add?
I do. Of course, I do. You might expect that. I'm totally in favor of what you want to do. And I hope that it includes live entertainment, because I think that gives you your best chance for success. Having said that, you know, my 30-plus years in the fire service tells me that the best of intentions sometimes end up with the most catastrophic results. And I think our fire chief and our building official, that's what they need to look at. And for me, that's what they determine is what you have to do. So, when we look at whether we grant the liquor license or not, it's sort of like, what comes to my mind is, okay, we don't know what we're going to do yet, but we know we're going to have alcohol there. And so, I'm not, I'm not as comfortable with granting the license. However, we talked about it being contingent or provisional, so I would be, you know, receptive to that. But I would not be receptive to anything that fell anywhere short of the code compliance that will ensure the safety of you, your staff, and occupants who are going to enter that building without a single thought into the safety features in that building, other than the presumption that they're safe. And so, that was what I had stated previously, and that's really only what my position is.
Thank you.
I think, you know, as a member of this board, I've heard from a lot of people in town, we want more restaurants, we want more restaurants, we want more restaurants. And I think acting on this tonight, as you said, you know, open up for lunch and do a dinner-type situation, deal with the regulatory piece. And I agree with Alex, you know, regulations are there for a specific reason, for public safety, for the safety of not only you, but the public at large. So, you said earlier, look at, you know, our step one is to get this restaurant up and running. I think the town needs it. I'm more than happy to support this.
Yep, I agree with everything that's been said. Nothing to add.
I think we're just acting on the alcohol, but does the chief of Roland have any comments you want to make right now?
Well, here's a resource for you to make a decision. I'm glad to see council on board here. We've worked before, and somebody, I think the biggest frustration we have here, and I see Gwen here, thank you very much for your input, we don't have one person that's the point person for this entire building. Gwen represents one of four users. And I'm talking with four people. They don't communicate well. I think by having council on board here, we're going to be able to have somebody on board that's going to oversee the entire project, which should be the engineer or the architect of record, but I'm more than happy to work with council here to get that to happen. That's my biggest frustration. We're just not on board yet. We're not communicating at all. And we have to get past that. But other than that, I had a nice conversation with Virginia this afternoon, and hopefully, we can move forward with this.
Chief?
Yeah, like Roland said, we're just waiting right now for all of the plans to come in so that we can do, you know, have the official code review and move forward, follow the steps.
I just wanted to say that one thing that confused me that I really didn't understand until the last couple of days, I kept hearing that I hadn't put in a building permit application. And I kept saying, but I'm not building anything. And I didn't understand what a building permit application, how it applied when we're not changing, within Act Three at least, and pretty much within the rest of it, too, we're not really building anything. So, I thought there was some misunderstanding, and I didn't realize that the building application needed to be applied for any change of use in a building, in order to initiate, you know, what happens once that change of use has been applied for. So, I apologize for my misunderstanding. I just kept saying, but we're not building anything. And I didn't really get that the building application was an essential factor of this, regardless of whether we were building anything or not. So, it's only really recently that we got on board with what the town's thinking seems to be, and we're just exploring, you know, exactly how the codes apply to the users, and what's the best way for all of us to be safe and yet have commerce. So...
That's a good point. Perhaps we should change the word "building permit" to "everything you ever want to do."
Are you, please, anyone in the public have any comments?
Public first.
I think I was talking to say...
Hello. Bob Pesson from Boston Street. I was at Dave Brubeck's first concert. I was at his son's concert. I was there and knew that he had passed on. What I want is jazz in the town. I want to have a good restaurant. I hate to see the property turn over two or three times. And I would encourage everybody to expedite as quickly as they can getting this up and running, because it's a shame to have it sitting there and doing nothing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing then, I would wait to see, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion was made in second to close this part of the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, let's open a discussion of the board. Or a motion.
I think in the past, we have been, when we look at other businesses in town that had situations to resolve, we've been a little leery about granting the liquor license. In this particular case, there's code that says that certain steps have to be taken, even if we were to grant the license. And in that way, it becomes provisional. And perhaps we can help them with their step beyond us to the state in dealing with this. But I would not be comfortable if we weren't absolutely clear that if those code issues were not resolved, that the license would not be enforced.
That's the standard form of our motion, that when you approve it, it's subject, and the draft motion proposes that, number one, your approval at the local level is subject to ABCC approval in Boston and to the passing of all local inspections. So, and just to point about Dave Brubeck, it does take five.
All right, move with the board of selectmen, vote for certain master general law, chapter 138, to approve the application of Act Three Restaurant, I have my glasses tonight. Act Three Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Act Three. Josely Noguera, manager, for the retail restaurant license for the alcohol beverages license for premises of 529 Great Road, Littleton. If one approved, would the insurance of said license to be subject to ABCC approval and the passing of all local inspections?
Second.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations, and work with our regulators.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great. So, the disposition, the old school, the old police station, we voted on, I think, the 18th to talk about it tonight, and what we're finally going to...
Pretty quick with the trigger.
Yeah.
Quarter to nine.
So, any discussion by the GMBC?
Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple of years ago, the building committee was before you to give an update on the condition of the old police station. We did a controlled demolition approximately two or so years ago. Then afterwards, since then, it's been structurally evaluated, and we've got a good grasp on what condition the building is in. The report that we gave to you at the time was that structurally, it is sound and could be reconditioned for repurposed. And the discussion was who was going to make the decision whether the building was to be raised or to be left and have something done to it. And our position, the building committee's position now is the same as it was at the time, a couple of years ago, that we're not going to be making that decision whether it gets torn down or not. We feel that that's a decision for you people to make. That our report has stated that it's structurally sound. However, to go through it, to make it usable again, it would have a lot of work to be done to it to bring it up to code. How much work depends upon what you want to do with the building. At the time, I think the discussion was to possibly put park and rec in there. So, that could have been a full-blown remodel job. We never got an exact cost on it, but it could be, depending upon what you want to do again, it could be a million dollars. If we want to cut it back, and been rumors of maybe making dry storage there, it could be $100,000. But there's money to be put into it, because it has, it needs to be brought up to today's building codes. And since the codes have changed in the last few years, of course, it's more work, more money, et cetera. So, the building committee figured we'd stick with our previous report to you, that the building is able to be redone. Whether you want to move forward with that, that's up to you. On the other part of it, we also discussed the long-range use of the property. And I think this is the big one, because it's already been predetermined that when it comes time to add on to the fire station, that's, it's going to happen there. We're not going to build in a different location. But that's the place that seems to fit the town, and that's where it's going to stay. So, I think in the big picture, that's what needs to be looked at. What do you really want to do with the property there? What's the long-range plan for that? Do you want to have that just isolated as for the fire department? And if that's what you choose to do, then whatever happens to the police station, the old police station, that's evidently gone. But I think you need to come up with that, and it's a big decision. Again, I have heard that possibly using it for dry storage, part of the building could be cut off and at some point, made it smaller, but it's still going to take up space. So, in my mind, I think that you've got to decide whether you want the building area at all, or if you want that lot exclusively for the fire department.
Thank you. Chief?
In the, just about two years now, since we started our review of the whole property, we've had various different fits for the property, different, you know, shapes of the building. And currently, the best fit that we have utilizes the majority of the property. And in the area where that police station, or the old police station is, is where the current parking lot would be planned to be placed. And some of the discussions we've had about cutting the building, you know, and saving the last third of it, that one-third... one-third could potentially be saved, but it would be at the cost of losing one-third of the current parking spaces there now. Right now, we have, I think, in the whole parking lot, there's 38, 39 spaces. And that's about what we would retain. It actually doubles. Currently, there's 20 spaces on the side and, you know, an additional 17, 18 along the old police station and out back. By eliminating the old police station, it was put them all in one place, create a little bit of green space, a little bit of a buffer between the neighbors, and looking at the new fire station. You know, yes, it would potentially fit there, but at what cost? Now, when you look at the whole big picture, best use of the property, in my opinion, it would be to eliminate the old police station, have the best use, have a full 37, 38, 39 parking spots there for the park, the fire station, conservation property. By the end of this year, our department's going to be close to 50 in membership. We really don't even have technically enough parking spaces on the property just for the membership, for training sessions, or for large incidents. So to eliminate a third of that, I think that would be pretty significant by retaining even a portion of the old police station.
Board members?
I was ready to tear it down in the last meeting. I mean, the last meeting. I think the chief makes some great points. And, you know, the discussion of the storage area to spend $100,000 on an area where Park and Rec wants to do some storage when you've got, you know, a big spot out back here at the town hall with lights already installed. If we need storage, they need to bring that forward and possibly do it to where their organization is located.
I'm sorry.
Any other board members? Are you speaking on this one thing he just said?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
You're mentioning having them use an area out here for storage, the parking lot. We're currently looking at the library expansion, which right now, that seems to be the big topic, is keeping the library right where it is and expanding there. And parking is a big concern because we have a mandatory number of parking spaces that's required under the grant application with the Massachusetts Library Commission, and also with our own towns regulations with the planning board. So at this point, I'd be hesitant to designate anything other than parking and every bit of paved area out here.
Wood?
I agree with Jim. We're trying to find an economic in saving a building we don't need, we shouldn't have. And the reason, we can certainly do it. We can certainly invest money if somebody's going to occupy the building. I guess the million-dollar number is probably a little low. But if we cut down on parking places, one of the things that we do know that we want to preserve forever and ever is Fay Park, and the use of Fay Park, and the easy use of Fay Park. When we start cutting down on places to keep a building that's made out of two-by-six lumber, or two-by-eight, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we need to look at what's important here. And what's important is we have a workable fire station for the next 50 years in this town that can accommodate a combination department of career and on-call people. That means people have to come in. That means people have to have space to train, et cetera, et cetera. What is clear is that we want Fay Park to be this social gathering place for many functions in this town. And we know what happens to the area when it is. There are cars everywhere. To cut back on parking space to accommodate a building like that just doesn't make sense. So the short of it is, I agree that this facility's time has come and gone, and it's time for a proper fire facility without negatively impacting Fay Park.
Mr. Bill? The building's been vacant for over three years. And no one's come forward in that interim period to say, I need 1,000 square feet or whatever, and this is what I need it to be. And that building would work well with these sort of modifications to suit those needs. We've had, you know, a few general discussions where it'd be nice to keep it, it'd be nice to have, but absent a cogent plan, and plus a warehouse in that community area, I don't think is appropriate. It just does not fit the character of that area of our town that a warehouse be placed there. The way that the fire station has developed over the many years, town hall, fire station, expand the fire station, that's a ship that has sailed a long time ago, and it makes good sense to do what we're going to do there. The fire station, as you said so eloquently, the folks training there, coming there to park, as the chief has also mentioned, is appropriate. My hesitation at the last meeting wasn't whether to take it down or not, it's just whether or not somebody would actually come forward with a plan. And that hasn't happened, so certainly I'm inclined to demolish the building.
Wilson?
I'd agree. I just had the, you know, I'm sure there's another way we can creatively solve the storage problem, but I agree exactly with what you guys said. It makes sense.
Mr. Gold?
I think everybody knows that I've been the biggest proponent to try to do something with the building. With that being said, I'm in agreement. Get rid of it. I wish the decision had been made four and a half years ago. The thing that bothers me, and the only reason why I'm here is to state this, the PMBC was asked to look at the building, see if it was structurally sound. We did, and we reported back that it was. And I thought that that was because there was some thought at that time of using. And now we've gotten to a point, four and a half, four years later, where I suggested getting rid of half or two-thirds of it and using what was left. Mr. Vella referred to it as a warehouse. It basically would have been an 1,800-square-foot garage. So it would serve two purposes. It would give Park and Rec a storage area that they need, and a storage area in the town hall here that they would then relinquish could be used by the COA. So there'd be two kinds of problems there, or problems solved there. And in addition to that, I thought that public bathrooms could be put in the building also to accommodate Fay Park. Since then, I have found out the fire department, the new building, is going to have handicapped accessible bathrooms to accommodate Fay Park. And there's just been so much pushback against doing it. You know, I'm fine with it. I have to say that over the last three or four years and people I've talked to, it bothers me that people are so willing to destroy a building that was only built 30 years ago, when in New England, we have towns, I grew up in Concord, and there are houses, not just in Concord, but here in town, that were built in 1700s. And it just bothers me to no end to hear the fact that this building is obsolete, and it's 30 years old. But that being said, I've spent a lot of time talking to Scott, Fire Chief, about this. And, you know, it's all good. And I mean, it's going to end up being what everybody wants. I was told that the destruction of the building is only going to run around $10,000, which is probably in large due to the fact that Jeff Feen and I and the prisoners from MCI through Jim Carr gutted the entire building for very minimal cost, less than $4,000, I think. So there isn't a lot of expense involved in getting rid of it. And I'm just glad that Paul pushed off the vote for no other reason than I could at least explain my reasoning behind what I was trying to do. Thank you very much.
Chief?
I would like to request, if you do go forward with a motion of destruction of the building, if the fire department may be willing to train with it until the time of construction.
You've got to try.
This is first to the chief's request there, because I certainly support using it as a training aid.
Until construction is complete. That's pretty open-ended, in a way. And how will the facility, how will the area look, I guess is the concern. In other words, a pile of rubble in the neighborhood is a concern of mine.
No. So seeing that the building has been gutted, it basically eliminates any type of fire opportunity that we can have for the, to have training fires in the building. That can't happen. We'll just continue to use the inside for search and rescue techniques, maybe have a barrel in the middle where we can fill the building with smoke, but we will not be burning the building. We will not be leveling the building or chopping it up and making it disgraceful for the neighborhood and making it an unsafe facility. It will, on the outside, it will remain its, just as its current appearance. But it will just, you will give us the blessing to use the interior of it for training sessions.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hazardous materials report on the building. Refresh your memory that there is hazardous, there is asbestos and mastic on the tiles. So when we did demo the inside of the building, the flooring is still down. We'll need to deal with that. We did have a price, I guess it was three years ago, whenever, on what it would cost. I don't have that with me, but do you remember what it was?
I don't think it was around $6,000.
Yeah, that sounds about right. About $6,000 for asbestos abatement. Nothing comes free.
Well, that being said, I mean, that has to be done no matter what. So if we can get that done, so the fire chief can do some on-site training, that would be fabulous.
We let it set because if we did decide to repurpose the building, the possibility exists to go over it. So we didn't have to take it up. But if we are taking the building down, then we'll have to deal with it.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to adopt the following policy statement relative to the disposition of the old police station building at 25th Street. The plans for expansion for the station on said property location include the raising of the old police station building and authorizing the fire department to use said building for training.
Second. Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the second on that?
Alex.
Alex.
Alex, okay. I'm being jumped tonight.
Doing a good job, too.
You're banging that gavel again?
I almost sat down. Moving on, seven B has to deal with Littleton Common. I know that the legacy committee had formed a plan. It's on our, in our little booklet here. Part of this was to also, I'm going to let you take over, but let the clock that the Rotary is donating to the town, and Paul, let you take it from there because you have the information on it.
Yes. Actually, about two or so years back, one of our members, as he was rummaging through many rummage sales, came across a friendly sign from the friendly restaurants. And he's been able to repurpose it, you know, using that with Rotary in the center of the clock. And the clock stands about seven feet tall. It'll be up on a pedestal in the town common area on the opposite side of the main part of the common, so the smaller part. Now, what you see in the package here is an artist depiction of a much larger piata area, type area for it. That's future work that the legacy committee is working with the 300th committee, and if there's funds available, to actually fund something like that. Short of it, Savis with Light and Water has already looked at excavating the dig safe, taking care of that piece of it, and providing electricity for the clock. Savis, again, is also taking care of the masonry work that'll be provided to form the pedestal for the clock to be put upon. The clock will be oriented so that you can read it on 119 headed towards and coming from Groton and from Acton area on 119. So that'd be the orientation of the clock. Center of the face of the clock, you know, where Mickey's big hand and small hand join together or so, would be roughly about six and a half, maybe seven feet off the ground at that point. So certainly, as passersby and automobiles, very easy to see, not a distraction to traffic. Jimmy Clye from Highway, Jimmy's here right now, is aware of the process. And what, from the legacy committee perspective, subcommittee, excuse me, of the 300th, we are asking that the board of selectmen approve placement of the clock on town property. The clock, again, is donated by Rotary, the Rotary Club of Littleton. All work is donated through Light and Water, and then also Rotarians working to get it erected and running. Any questions?
Great thing. So tonight, we're voting on the clock?
Yes, sir.
Not on the other?
Correct, just the clock.
Just the clock.
Where's our cake? I'm trying to pull up a picture, but the cake is not exactly in the center, right?
No, no.
The cake, the current cake?
Yeah.
It's not even near where it is.
It's over here somewhere.
Oh, really? I'm totally in the completely.
This Meeting House Road, going down the CDS.
All right, nevermind.
So you got headed towards Groton, on 119, to be on the right-hand side. Approximately one-third, I'm going stupid on the name of the street. Joe, help me, please.
Meeting House?
Meeting House, thank you. From the Meeting House, right oblique, to 110 intersection, roughly a third between that intersection and the intersection of 119, excuse me, 110 and 119.
You know, I might be more in favor if you turn it toward my office.
Yes, but we don't have Mickey's big and little hand, Joe.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to accept the donation of an antique clock from the Littleton Rotary Club and approve the installation on Littleton Common.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm here on you, sir.
Eight A, draft warrant for, to insert articles in the November 12, 2014 special town meeting.
So we wanted to start walking you through articles tonight, and there are some that we're prepared to talk to you about, and we have representatives from the Council on Aging to talk about two of their, or two of the proposals for seniors. You would need to complete action on inserting articles at your next meeting on September 22. And because the warrant closes on Wednesday, the 26th. Just in looking at the list of articles that are here as proposed, there's a routine article, one of bills of prior years, for which at this point, we don't, we don't know that we have any. But if we do, it requires a nine-tenths vote of the special town meeting to pay a bill from a prior year. Article two is an omnibus article to allow for FY 2015 budget amendments. We typically do this at a fall special town meeting prior to the setting of the tax rate. There will be some minor budget adjustments that would need to be made, nothing major to the operating budget. But it would certainly be a routine article to insert that one as well. The next article, which Bonnie talked about briefly in her fiscal update, was the idea that we may be able to bring certain requests for capital items, supplemental capital spending, to the fall town meeting. In a particular, a couple of projects that would address your goals, that you've adopted nine goals this year, there are, two of those goals would actually be augmented by, or facilitated, I should say, by additional funding. And we, the number one goal is update of the master plan. There's $100,000 that's already been appropriated. And Bonnie has indicated that she could find $50,000 to go towards that amount. So we may want to consider doing that. Also, just a reminder that we had agreed to a joint meeting with the planning board for this Thursday at, and I think we're scheduled at 7:30, now, to discuss master plan update. The chairs of the selectmen and planning board will be huddling prior to that Thursday evening meeting. But we did want to move ahead with establishing the steering committee for the master plan update by having a joint meeting of the planning board. So that was. So, that was one. The other one, as Bonnie also mentioned, was that, was the idea of funding a human, an elder and human services needs assessment, and we, and Pamela Campbell has, is putting together a proposal for about $35,000 that we're anticipating to be able to do that project, frankly, without that funding. And it is one of your, you've got, as I say, you've got nine goals. We don't have money in the budget right now in order to do the needs assessment, which Pamela and the COA are supportive of doing. So, the town meeting supplemental funding is an opportunity to address that. So, that's one we can talk about with COA. The other, the other two, one is a proposal for a property tax deferral for seniors, and the other is a proposal to amend the personal exemption amounts. And perhaps we just want to stop there for a moment, since we do have folks to, from elder services to talk to us about those, so.
I think we should start with tax deferral?
Yes.
That's the simplest one. By statute, we can offer a program called Tax Deferral to seniors who qualify. And by qualify, obviously, they have to be seniors, they also have to meet certain income requirements. The Tax Deferral Program allows a senior to, in essence, not pay their taxes now, but to instead pay them at the time that the property is sold, if they were, say, to go into a nursing home or to pass. And then the money is repaid to the town with interest. At the time the program was established, there were very low income levels, $20,000 was the income, and at that time, the interest rate was set at 8%, which, in a world of 17%, looked pretty good. Things have changed, and nowadays, we have very few seniors who come even close to meeting those income requirements, and an 8% interest rate looks rather high to people. So, the first thing that we propose is to change those, to raise the income level to something that is more in line with towns around us that have already moved to make those kinds of changes. And then we're asking you to also think about lowering the interest rate to something that would be more reasonable in people's minds. I doubt if there would be droves of people who'd take advantage of this, but certainly seniors who find themselves in an extreme situation, this could be something that'd be quite attractive to them. We have a board member, Chris Simone, who has done some work by going around to other towns, and he found that it varied a bit from town to town, but most of the towns were looking at something like $40,000 for income, Westford is $55,000 for the income limit, which is still very, very modest. And the advantage of doing a program like this and making these kinds of changes is the town loses no money. This one is a real win-win. The senior gets the relief, the town gets their money back. At the time that we first proposed this, there were some questions brought forward, and I know, Paul, you had asked the question of what kind of impact would this have financially? You must remember that, once the program gets going, there will be, on any given year, people moving in and out, so homes would be paying back, as well as homes would be taking their income out. But I do have to be honest and say that, right now, we have no people who are taking advantage of the deferral program, no one who's been qualified at this time or who chooses to use it. So, I don't think it's going to be large amounts of revenue that would be deferred to a later time.
I would offer, the only thing I ask, and Bonnie already knows this, this is Keith and Andrew, is that as part of the article, we have a good faith estimate as to how much it may cost the first year. Part of the article is asking that we actually implement it in the current fiscal year, and November would be roughly halfway through the fiscal year at that. I think you've already done some preliminary work with Chris Simone doing some more work, a little bit more ideas to the number of folks that may be participating in it. And again, it's a good faith estimate. If we're going from 20 to something greater than that, 50, 55 is possibly suggested, that certainly opens the window quite a bit. If we make it more attractive by going from 8% to something less, again, that makes it a more attractive program. It certainly, the reason you're doing it is to bring people into it. So, the expectation is, folks indeed will come into it. And just as long as it, we put into the article, this is what a good faith, good faith estimate is, that it would cost us the first year, because there is no income in the first year, and we understand people going in and out of it based on life circumstances, as to when they would exit the program, whether it's passed on through heirs or passed on through sale, that the taxes are indeed recouped, and that's important to drive home, that they're not lost, they're exactly as the program says deferred, but we should offer, at least with that first-year cost, what it expected to be.
One piece of data that might help us to get some insight into that are the number of seniors who currently qualify for just the elderly exemption. There are only 13 in town who currently qualify for that. And again, tax deferral would be something, whether people would choose to do it or not. For 41(c), which is the exemption for seniors, that has not only income requirements, but asset, you have to meet an asset test on that. So, that could give us the potential that maybe as many as 13. Again, I do have to point out that we do have zero enrollment, and we've always had zero enrollment in that program.
I'm supportive of it. Just as far as the information provided by the voters, is that we have that, as I say, good faith estimate, that's all.
I think this is a great tool to helping keep seniors in their homes, in their community, where they want to be. There's also an advantage for the town in that seniors are not high-demanders of service for the town, and when a house turns over, then the odds are much higher that it'll be housed with family, and there's certain costs of services that are added on to that. So, I think that, I think that's an important piece. Of course, the most important part is that if we have seniors that are under stress, and we can find ways to help them and not break the bank in the process, we should do it. And I think this is one of those programs.
Pam, can I just fill me in, because I'm missing something. It's a tax deferral, so they're not paying any taxes. What happens if that individual comes to a point where they have to go to a nursing home? Does not the nursing home want the proceeds from the house?
The town becomes the first lien holder against the property.
Okay.
And as further provision under state statute, that the amount that's deferred can not go beyond 50% of the property value. So, we're protected from any direction.
I answered that question. Just for your information, in the other towns, it has been pretty much shown that this is a last resort kind of thing for seniors. It is something which is there, it's a possibility, they look for other means first, and then if that will save their home, then they would go to it. So, most of the towns have two or three people out of the whole town that are involved in it, even the ones at $55,000 and $40,000. So, I don't think it's a crisis concern for us in terms of loss of income, but it is certainly a possibility to help those few seniors who might need to do that, and to do it at a level which is more reasonable for today.
Thanks.
I did take a look at possible fiscal impact of something like this, and I had Kathy Miller kind of run through the accounts as they stand now. So, the best measurement we could come up with is who qualifies for the exemptions now under the senior exemptions, and we have 20 between all of the senior exemptions. The total taxes for all of those 20 applicants total about $74,000. So, that's a, like a worst-case scenario, and as was said before, this is truly a last-chance scenario for most of these people that qualify. We don't have anybody enrolled in it now with the levels that we have, so I would anticipate that a very small percentage of the 20 that we have availing themselves of the other exemptions might apply.
There is some stigma involved, and many seniors do not wish to have a lien placed against their home, so even though this has been offered to people, they often say no. So, I think this one's an easy one in terms of, it is really no loss to the town, little impact in that first year, perhaps, and really think that this would be a nice one to present to people as a step in the right direction, to helping seniors with property tax relief.
Did you want to speak on the other one, too?
Yeah. The second one is a little bit more costly, but still, it needs to be kept in perspective with a, what is it, $37 million budget now. Right now, there are certain exemptions that are available, again, by statute. If you are over 65 and your income is very low and your asset level is very low, $40,000 is the asset level, for example, you are entitled to an exemption. If you are blind, you are entitled to an exemption. If you're a disabled veteran, at least 10%, you are entitled to what's called a personal exemption. We are allowed, again, under statute, to bump up the percentage, add a percentage on top of that, to make that amount a little bit more robust. And just to make it clear what kind of amounts of money I'm talking about, if you're blind, you are entitled to a $500 reduction in your taxes. And if we were to bump that by 50%, you would get $750 off of your taxes. In the town of Littleton, there are three people who qualified for the blind exemption. And I already mentioned, there's 13 that qualified for the senior exemption. Bonnie worked closely with Kathy, and they determined that if we bumped up all those personal exemptions to the 50% max above what the state says by statute is the lowest limit, it would cost an additional $9,000, which translates out to, what, $2.50 in everybody's pocket, because it comes out of the overlay. That one does indeed cost us some money, but again, the people who would be impacted by that, $750 could mean a lot to someone whose income is as low as is necessary to qualify for these personal exemptions. That one's a little more controversial, but again, what we're asking you to do is place this on the warrant. Let the town decide whether they want to do this. We're not asking you to step up and cough up the $10,000. We're saying, give us the opportunity to convince the town that this would be a good thing to do for blind people and disabled and seniors in town.
And Kathy Miller and I did analyze the overlay accounts, and this can be managed within the current budget for overlay.
Thank you. Let's see, and then, just running through the remainder of the articles, there's the proposal to establish an excluded debt stabilization fund, which Bonnie referred to in her earlier presentation. There are two articles which are, I think, would probably be, if offered, it would be offered as a set, and that is that there's $100,000 that the planning board has for active recreation purposes from the 15th Great Road Host Community Agreement. That it's the, we've been working with the planning board, also are in communication with the Community Preservation Committee, where we're hoping to do is to, is to reach some kind of an agreement where the $30,000 that is needed to do a feasibility study of turf fields could, instead of being funded directly out of the planning board's $100,000, which the planning board seems to be supportive of, that it would actually be to the town's financial benefit if we could first put the $100,000 into the Community Preservation Fund, where it being there, we would get $30,000 in state matching funds, and then spend the 30, and then vote in the next article and take $30,000 out. We've got, we've got some meetings that we're having with Community Preservation Committee to see if we can address some concerns that they seem to have about it, but if there is support to go ahead with a $30,000 appropriation for the turf fields feasibility, I'd like to find a way to fund that that is a, you know, that's a wash, that's of no cost to the town. So, we're going to continue to work with the Community Preservation Committee and try to, try to reach that. The, and, let's see, so, and we talked about the other articles that passed revolving fund for the dog leash law, to fund our agreement with Oxborough, the whether to amend the town bylaws, to add a member of FinCom to the Community Preservation Committee. This board has already inserted the article for FinCom, requiring FinCom residency requirement. You may want to do that also for other town boards, and you've already voted to insert an article to accept new estate road and Nagog Hill Road, and we will have a public hearing on those road layouts two weeks from tonight. Yep?
And we just backed up to 12. Completely spot the town residency requirement. I'd say maybe something in legal counsel could help us with the exact words, but accept is provided by Mass General Law. And what comes to mind was the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority. When we did the Russell Street renovation, you may recall that the state, well, the agency absolutely required, authorities, excuse me, absolutely required us to have the superintendent and the building principal on the building committee, and we went through that. So, there were voting members, Diane Bemis at the time, and Jay Mall, superintendent and principal of Russell Street. The only one that came to my mind, that is an exception to where we'd want everybody just from town, but I think just by putting, you know, rather than having an article on there that's already flawed because of some state law, that we just put that exception in there.
Sounds good to me.
And, you know, this, the other piece of that is, we talked about the possibility of our ability to remove anybody that this board is responsible for the appointment to any particular board. It's kind of difficult to get them removed, so is there a way we can build that into that also? And that's just not for us, but any?
Yeah, from my, from my experience in having that language in a town charter elsewhere, we could put it in, but it will, but it's going to be, it's not going to be easily enforceable to be able to remove a board member, but we can certainly, I'd be glad to work with town council on some language in an article that we can discuss it.
I think, though, that if we're going to provide ourselves with that tool, that that needs to be a separate article and not rolled into something else. I think that's a separate.
I agree. I agree with that. And back up to Article 6, we have an up-and-coming policy meeting. I'd like to have that discussed, so before we insert anything.
Sure.
Let's run it by the folks that are going to be in the policy discussion.
And we don't, and I keep, I keep pushing it at them, and I haven't actually had FinCom say they want to, for sure they want to see it on the CDC, but I, from everything I see, they need to be there, so.
Well, Article 6 is the establishment of the excluded debt.
Yep. We can wait on that.
Can I ask Pam, sort of related to what the program is, for several years, we had talked about the Sudbury program. When we first started talking about it, it hadn't really gone anywhere, and now it's been in effect for a while. Is that beginning to look like something that's feasible, that we can do at some point?
I can relate to you ask that question, because I would love for us to have a substantive discussion on that. Yes, they have finished one year, I think they're in the second year, and there is some data that's come in on how they manage that program. The Sudbury option was to use the circuit breaker limits, so that you've got an established limit out there as a means testing for people, and then cap people's property tax when they were seniors and they met those income limits. And they've got some track record now. They also went a little bit further, it's a little more complicated than that. They actually put a cap on it so that they could predict how much money it was going to cost the town, and we get you some data on that. I had mentioned it last year when we met with the FinCom for our budget hearing, and it didn't fly very well, so.
No, it's not, it doesn't fly easily.
Yeah, it does not fly easily, because that's another one that, again, it's apportioned out to the other town people.
I think it's a great program, and I think we just have to make a conscious decision that we want to go that way, and now that there's more information, we might be in a better position to make a decision.
Right. That might be something to consider for May, but we didn't bring it up for this town meeting, a special town meeting especially. And then, at some point, Keith, we'll talk about the needs assessment.
Right now.
Okay, let's talk about the needs assessment. When you set out your goal, it had two pieces when I read it. One piece, we've already been talking about tax relief for seniors, but the other piece was to improve services and increase services at the Council on Aging. About a year ago, we set up a subcommittee on the COA Board to look at doing a needs assessment, because we realized that we needed more information about what was going on with seniors in Littleton. And not just seniors, but what I might call pre-seniors, in the same way you'd say pre-teens, people who in the next five years will become seniors, or probably more realistically, we should even think in the next 10 years, will become seniors. Part of the reason we were looking at this is Littleton is one of the towns that the senior population is growing quite steadily, and we're growing at a faster rate than in the state of Massachusetts in general. Don't know exactly why, but there are just more seniors here each year, and it's projected to continue out like that through 2020 and even into 2030, the state is looking at that. To service those people, I, as the Director of Elder and Human Services, need to understand better what their needs are. I can guess, I can speculate, I can go to Tina and I can ask her what she sees, recognizing that Tina sees the people who self-identify, who come through the door. We are right now doing a phone outreach program, and we're finding some information out, but even that, it's pretty specific. You're talking to somebody right on the phone, and people are often hesitant to mention things like abuse, food insecurity, financial insecurity. So a year ago, we started talking about how do you do a real needs assessment, not just a quick little one-page survey, do you want more open space, but, you know, a really in-depth thing. We discovered this group at UMass, the Gerontology Institute there is working, they've worked with several towns to specifically talk with seniors about their needs. We actually had them come to see us, and that's where we discovered that they have a whole package. They can do this. They do a demographic analysis, they work with focus groups within the town, they work with what they call key informants, which are people like you, asking for your input. From that, put together a survey instrument, conduct the survey, they have very talented people, they get very high percentage rates of surveys returned, then they analyze that and come out with a final report that begins to point you in the direction of what you need to provide in town. Again, I can guess on some of that stuff. I suspect there's food insecurity out there. They'll give us the numbers to really point us in that direction, which then lets us plan and prioritize and figure what we can do to have impact on that. Dr. Munchler from the institute came out in February and spoke with the subcommittee, the needs assessment subcommittee, very well-spoken professor, and obviously clearly understands the needs that seniors are up against because of this experience in other towns like Hangum and Marchfield, both big and smaller towns. We've asked that group to put together the proposal, and that's what Keith was alluding to, is they've given us the beginnings of the proposal, and they've helped us to put together a work plan. We have a several-page work plan that lays out the work to be done, and we'd like to ask you to fund making that happen. This is not a quick thing. This project would probably take about nine months to complete, but in the end, we'd have some really good, solid data that will serve us not just right now, but, as I said, looking forward five years and probably 10 years.
Just as an addition, we don't want, as the COA and the Human and Elder Services, to be doing things, as someone said earlier, expending money but not knowing what the quality is of what we're getting, or if we're reaching the right things. The, I'm the head of Needs Assessment Committee, Subcommittee, and what we have been trying to do is to find a way to find out the real needs of people in the community as told to us by the people in the community, the seniors, the caregivers, the people who are most affected, and to make sure that we're providing as much as possible the best services that we can for their needs, not because we think that they're needs, but because they're telling us that these are, these are their needs. And it could be financial, it could be housing, it could be elder service, it could be any one of a number of things that we're not, we know, we keep shooting at it, but we're not sure what we're shooting at. This survey is extremely comprehensive. I've read the ones that they did for three different towns, and the questions they asked are very important to feeding, and they can then interpret and tell us what are the things that our seniors really need in this town. That's what we're asking for, is the chance to do that. And we have to tell you that once we find out, then it's going to be our job to find the means to reach those particular things, which are, you know, the highest points of that, and to reach the seniors and the, and the disabled of our town.
Now, are we inserting all these items?
We can, let's see, just based on the discussion that we had, I think you, I think you could go ahead and do, number one, bills of prior years, number two, budget amendments, because both of those are routine. If you're agreeable to the two supplemental appropriations we're proposing, master plan update, 50,000, human, elder human service needs, 35, you could insert that article. We just discussed property tax deferral for seniors, the personal.
I mean, we haven't set the limits yet on that, on that particular.
Your, the proposal has a, has zero to 4% instead of 8%. Maybe you'd want to settle on that.
Up to 4% interest rate, if you want to make it lower, that's fine.
Some towns have zero.
Some of the towns actually have a 0% interest rate.
Right, and then we suggested a, an income of 55,000, which is similar to what Westford has. I believe Acton has 45,000.
So I think that if you, if you wanted to, those are the first five articles, I think you could insert those in some form. And so I'd ask the board, you know, what is, what is the feeling, you know, 0 to 5? We're talking about a low percentage personally, you know, I have no issue with the 0% interest. And if, and if we're not comfortable doing that, maybe tie it into, they'll tie it into the economy.
Well, if you select something like 1 or 2%, at least it's easier to sell it to people, that the town gets all of its money back in a little bit.
Sure, plus a little bit.
Yeah, and it makes it more attractive than a reverse mortgage or something.
8% I think goes for the mortgage.
Is it worth indexing to anything, up to a maximum?
Yeah, no more than, yeah, but how? What do you index?
Are we allowed to, and the, we have to vote to accept a number?
A number.
And then if we were going to change it, we'd have to go back and vote it again. So if we, if we said, what do you want to say, 0, 1, 2?
No more than 1, I'd say no more than 1.
1%.
I'd offer, at least looking at inflation, realizing we're helping in the short term that the person we're helping won't be affected by it later on.
If they're still alive and they sell their house, they'll be affected by it.
Yes, but usually it's.
Less, you know, so.
That'd again be a little bit helpful, as to what history has shown us, as to the disposition of the property of people who have used this program. You know, to be clear, I support the tax deferral program for people who are in need of this. We have sometimes, we spoke earlier this evening about making sure we understand what we're doing with our money, our revenues versus costs. This is a cost, and there's nothing wrong with that. And when we talk about priorities, with the FinCom and prioritize and everything that we're going to do, and we talked a lot about data. All I'm asking is we have the appropriate amount of data that's applied to this Warren article, so that it's clear to folks what they're voting on. That's my only request in all of this.
So you're saying, based on a 1% deferral, you're looking, based on the numbers we heard tonight, possibly 13, somewhere around $75,000 maximum, you want to see that 1% carry through 10 years, 15 years?
No, it's, it's only carried through for the life of the use of it.
Correct. It can be changed. You can vote, change the percentage way to wrong.
Yeah, interest rates go back to 17, you go back to 8.
I'd offer, we round it to a CPI, you know, to a whole number, you know, to, you know, we round it down from the CPI.
One of the reasons I like the artificially low percentage is that part of this is, is if somebody's in real need, they're also, they're, they're very concerned about finances and stuff like that. And when you tell them, well, it's going to be 3% or 4% interest, that may cause them to say, well, maybe, maybe I shouldn't do this, which is their right to do, and, you know, and maybe we should get that kind of money. But if somebody's in that kind of need, let's not give them that deliberation, too. Let's say, look, you know, it's 1%, it's nothing, okay, I can do it, I can get the relief I need, and, and go that way. So that's why I like the low number, because in the end, whether it's 1, 2, or 3% in, in actual cash value, isn't all that great.
Yeah, all I'm asking is a very conscious decision, rather than, gee, this feels good. 0 feels really good. But I don't think that's the way you set policy, because it feels good. It's a deliberate process. That's all I'm asking here.
So what are you looking for? What is it exactly to make a decision? What are you looking for?
I would offer that, you know, we've made some comments.
Yeah.
As to what, you know, again, we feel good about something, but we pick something hanging on, and whether the CPI is the right number or not, I don't know the answer to that as part of this discussion. I don't know, it's an absolute requirement, we decide tonight, but maybe.
I don't think so either, but I think, you know.
I support the article, but some of the fine tuning of the precise pieces of it.
But if you, if you tie it to anything on the outside, but have to come back, you know, to, to get town approval, I mean, from what I, you're saying that it has to be a number?
Well, if, if what PJ is saying is that we should look to what the CPI.
Today.
Increase was, right, for the year.
Today.
For the, for, according to, on Bureau of Labor Statistics, it was up, in July 2012, it had, it had increased 1.7% from a year ago. So if, what, if what I heard was round down from, from the CPI, then we would round down to 1%. But, but the deliberative process by which we did that was to look at the CPI, say it's 1.7, and then I guess you choose whether, do you round up to 2 or round down to 1? And then we put that number into the article, not CPI, you put the number that you.
But again, to change.
Oh, I thought you were talking about it would change.
That's what I thought you were talking about.
Pick a number.
Just, just, just for right now. Right, right, it's one and done.
For purposes of deliberation.
We can go back and change it later on.
Armed with the knowledge that the CPI was 1.7%, according to this online.
Perfect.
Then you can choose either 1 or 2% as what you'd like to put in the article.
Okay, that's fine.
Being said, 1%.
The case for science.
It still sounds like 1%, doesn't it, Jim?
I'm good with that. If the rest of the board is, I mean, that's my opinion.
So with, so you could insert those first five articles if you're, if you're agreeable.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles on the warrant for November 12, 2014, special town meeting, subject to the approval of Town Council. Article 1, Board of Selectmen, bills of prior years. Article 2, Board of Selectmen, fiscal year 2015 budget amendments. Article 3, Board of Selectmen, supplemental funding 2015 capital items from article, from available funds, to include the $35,000 for Council on Aging and the $50,000 for the master plan update. Article 4, Board of Selectmen, Council on Aging, property tax deferral for seniors with a 1% interest rate and the increase from 20 to 55,000. Article 5, Board of Selectmen, amend the 2015 personal exemption amounts, where am I, 20 to 50%. I don't have my glasses, I might add.
Well done.
And at almost 10 o'clock, rounding up.
Second?
The move in second, Allos in favor?
Aye.
Very good. So we'll complete, if, if you'd like, we'll complete action at the meeting two weeks from tonight. I'll get some language from Town Council on the bylaw amendments that we discussed.
I really thank you for this. I think this is a step in the right direction, and that we'll get information that when you guys are old enough to use the COA, we'll have programs in place.
I want to know how it comes, he's the only one to do what Take 5 was on the floor.
My, my daughter, who turns 25 today, is marrying a jazz musician that we consider, so I know.
See.
At least I knew who it was. And I knew, yeah, I knew about Take 5, too, so.
Okay, moving on, staffing vacancy review, fire department. Before I do it, Keith.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
We're keeping the chief here and Jimmy here.
Yeah.
Is there any way in the future we could start at like 6:30 and have these type of things done?
With the permission of you all, we can start at 6:30.
Absolutely. And take information like this and get it done, instead of having them here at 10 o'clock at night.
Well, this is sort of an extraordinary night. I'm not a big fan of starting earlier, because people have to come from work. Your office is, if you can walk to your office.
So, but I, I see some of these things coming on the, on the agenda this time of night. I think it's a lot easier, we know this is coming up, maybe we start at 6:45 or whatever, and we know it's not going to take that long, just a thought.
I don't disagree. On exception, I support that, to make it a, you know, a routine process, as Alex said, because the day job sometimes does cause a little bit of a delay getting here.
Well, the other thing we can do is vote through these very quickly and get these all done.
Yeah. Chief?
So staffing vacancy review. One of our newest members, Matt Robinson, has transferred to the Wilmington Fire Department, creating the vacancy. One of the positions that he filled is on the rotating shift, so for the, filling the 20, he is one of eight, filling the 24-hour shift for the early clock coverage for the station. Looking to fill this position, obviously it would be filled at an opening step, which is one down from what he was currently being paid. It is a benefited position. By filling that, it would just bring us back up to, back up to par, so we wouldn't have to be paying the overtime to fill a shift.
Do you have people in place already that could fill it? Do we need through a process that you've already used?
I do. Expand on that discussion a little bit. We, just under a year, a year and a half ago, we ran a process, of which we ran 14 of our members through. That process came down to eight finalists. We've used, actually, I apologize, seven, seven finalists, we used six of them. One of them who fell in the middle of the list was not available at the time because he was still enlisted. He has since been discharged, he is now a veteran, and going with the military preference. And his position that was on the list, where he fell right in the middle of the list, I would recommend that we extend our list. Originally, we were looking at roughly a year to keep the list, and we're at about 16, 17 months from when we did that. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to reach out to that last individual that was on the list and utilize that, that person. He met all of the criteria at the time, we had an extensive process, and I think he would be a great fit, and he would also have to attend the academy, just as the, as the other six did. Additionally, it allows us, you know, to, a significant savings on, on currently filling the shift, especially where we've had such a, a long-term illness as well. So right now, it would be nice to get everybody back up to par.
Do you need that in the motion? We don't need that in the motion.
No, it's not, it's not a policy, but we wanted to make sure that we had the discussion with the board about what was going to happen.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the fire chief's request under the staffing vacancy review policy to fill one full-time benefit firefighter EMT position. Move in second, Allos in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Jim, staffing of temporary seasonal position.
Extended an offer to the full-time position that we have. This is to fill the long-term illness or injury. We're not positive, the person that we have will take a seasonal job, if he doesn't, then we'll advertise the seasonal job. But we've been running short so long, literally, but how many guys are supposed to have?
And we still have one, that the long-term disability is still pending, a retirement action by Middlesex County, that we don't, we don't control that decision, and we hope that it reaches a conclusion at some point, so.
So you're calling it a seasonal, but it's kind of like a backfill? Do you know what this is?
Well, the seasonal position, according to HR, like, we had summer seasonal, they have to be done by, like, the beginning of October, you can't take a winter seasonal until, like, November 15th, and then they have to be done by April 1st.
Can you call it a temporary position?
Nope, and they're entitled to benefits, and we have to cut them loose and rehire them. So that's why it's not very appealing to some people, and right now, the economy's good, so most of the good people that you could get are working. Before, we used to hire winter drivers, we could get quite a few, but now it's not as easy to do that.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the highway operations manager's request of staffing vacancy review policy to fill one temporary seasonal truck driver/equipment operator. Move it in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
I have a day job, too, so if we could do it earlier, it'd be nice. I'll just throw that out. Good night.
As a tradition, auto-clear.
How you feeling, Jim?
Good, but see, now I'm over my, a lot of time from my doctor's note, the wrath of sin, I guess. Chief Matt?
Yeah.
Uh-oh. Okay. You have a night job.
Yeah, just to confirm on the next item, that as a dog, we had received, there was a dog bite incident in August. We had been prepared to proceed with a recommendation that this board schedule a dangerous dog hearing, which I know you really enjoy, and which we could start early and stay late, just for that hearing, but that the chief does have the update.
The dog, I ordered the dog put in quarantine, I don't know if I overstepped my bounds or not, but I did it anyways. The owner, the dog went through quarantine fine. Anyways, to make a long story short, we talked to the owner, the owner has removed the dog from Littleton. The dog is back at where it originally had come from, and so, which is legal, and so the dog is no longer, there's no need for hearing, because the dog no longer resides in our community, so will it reside in our community?
Nice job. Very, nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had all it, three hours, and talked about a dog?
It is, bro.
Scheduling of the selectmen's meetings, item 9A1. Meetings would be Thursday, September 11th, Monday, October 6th, Monday, November 3rd, Wednesday, November 12th, Saturday, November 15th, Monday, November 17th, and Monday, December 1st, 15th.
And also in October, it's the 6th and the 20th, so we'd have two. We do it on either side of Columbus Day.
So the Saturday, the 15th, that's that whole, what do you call it?
That's the, that's the, well, actually, you don't have to bring your lunch, we'll provide you with lunch, but it would...
It is so much fun.
Sounds amazing.
Ready? Move that the board of selectmen vote to schedule the following board of selectmen's meetings as read by the chair. Meetings, the dates indicated, 7:00 PM, Room 103, Shattuck Street Building. Thursday, September 11, 2014, Monday, October 6 and 20, 2014. Monday, November 3, 2014, Wednesday, November 12, 2014. Saturday, November 15, 2014, joint meeting with the FinCom. Monday, the 17th, 2014, Monday, December 1 and 15, 2014, regular meetings.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion on that? Oh, good. Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from sessions on August 11 and August 18.
Second. Move in second, it's okay, the minutes from October 11 and 18, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Make motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second to adjourn, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you. Thank you.